Have to work out.
He said he could now, ain't he?
Oh, okay. Started morning.
Thank you.
You guys start.
We're gonna start the meeting at seven o'clock, say your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you roll call Ben Hubb?
Yep.
Damian Muren. Jeff Corpenney?
Here.
Is that plug not working or something?
It's Turner.
Have the minutes from the public hearing about the comprehensive plan committee that was held on August 28th at 6:15. Township Board of Trustees opened the special meeting at 6:15 with roll call Damian Muren, Jeff Corpenney, and fiscal officer were present. Ben Hubb absent. The special meeting was held to review the Bowling Green Township Comprehensive Plan presented by the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Visitors and Comprehensive Plan Committee Board members Patty Bowlen, Dee Crier, Mark Burgess were present. Patty Bowlen presented some key points to the comprehensive plan. One of the biggest requests was an on-off ramp at 6:68 going east. ODOT said that will probably not happen. Some of the other issues, other things residents asked for were a township newsletter, water and sewer into Brownsville, fire in the E and the EMS in the township, public transportation, and mom-and-pop businesses. Dee Crier stated everything in the plan came straight from the residents' requests on the survey that was done. Patty said the residents want it to stay rural and don't want a bunch of housing developments coming into the township. After the trustees approve the plan, it will go to the county for approval. Trustee Corpenney recommended approval at the township at the trustee meeting. Trustee Corpenney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion seconded by Damian Muren. With business complete, the board adjourned at 6:21 PM. Any additions or corrections? These are the minutes from the last regular trustee meeting.
Do you have any regionalized meetings? We never heard those.
I don't have them with me. I can get you a copy of them if you want to see them. Assistant Prosecutor Amy Brown Thompson. Prosecu-- oh, those are visitors, never mind. Lincoln County Prosecutor Ken Oswald introduced Assistant Prosecutor Amy Brown Thompson. They were asked to come to the meeting to address a couple of issues the township is having. Ms. Brown Thompson stated she has reviewed all the information she has on the trash contract. She didn't see any problems with the way the bid process was done and doesn't see any problems with the contract. She will email a letter that can be used for companies that are not complying. If a company is still picking up in the township, the Board of Trustees will need to send a letter to the company. If they still don't comply, the prosecutor's office will get involved. Trustee Corpenney asked why the board couldn't contact the vendors to let them know the board was taking bids. Mr. Oswald said you run the risk of missing a vendor or if you do call a vendor, the others could keep your giving favorable information. Will Kern said there are residents in the township that are being billed more than they should. He has a bill. This was the first board had heard of this. Patty Bowlen asked why trustee Corpenney isn't following the trash contract when he should be upholding the laws of the township. Trustee Corpenney said CMI is still picking up his trash and he isn't breaking the law. Mr. Oswald stated his office will not continue to take the time to do bid packets, contracts, and legal opinions if they aren't being, if they are going to be ignored. The township needs to designate someone to contact the trash companies that are violating their contract. Dave Skinner stated the dumpster in town trustee Corpenney is referring to as his commercial dumpster and would like trustee Corpenney to stop harassing him. Mr. Oswald says the contractors are the problem, not the residents. Trustee Corpenney stated a letter had been sent out by the board to CMI. Fiscal officer doesn't remember, will have to look into it. Ms. Brown Thompson said there was also a question about drug testing the employees. There was an opinion sent out by the prosecutor's office in 2010. She emailed it to the fiscal officer. Trustees should review. The board would need cause to test an employee that cannot do random testing. The board would also have to pass a resolution that they will do drug testing if they have cause to do so, if the employee is coming in late frequently or some other lapse of job duties. Ms. Brown Thompson said there was a question about whether or not the zoning inspector's phone records would be public record and wanted to know what the board would have, what purpose the board would have in getting copies of the phone bill. Trustee Corpenney said he has residents request copies, he's had residents request copies of the phone records. If the phone bill is not used for township business, it is not a public record. Ron DeValle asked what to do about trustee Corpenney not signing employee paychecks. If there is another trustee absent from the meeting, how would the employee get paid? Trustee Hubb asked, called for a five-minute recess. Jeanette DeRennie, I don't know her, from the Lincoln County Planning Commission, was present to answer any questions the board had about the comprehensive plan that was presented to the board. The comprehensive plan is something to protect the future of the township. Land use maps will prevent developments from going into areas where they aren't wanted. Trustee Corpenney thanked the Comprehensive Plan Committee for all the work they put into the plan. Dee Crier said everything in the plan came from the residents, what residents said they wanted on the survey that was done. Trustee Corpenney asked what steps it takes from here. Trustees would pass a resolution, then there would be another public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. If the Planning Commission passes the comprehensive plan, it goes to the county commissioners. Trustee Corpenney made a motion to read the resolution into the record. Motion seconded by trustee Hubb. All in favor. Fiscal officer read resolution into the record. The following is a portion of the resolution. Full resolution is on file with fiscal officer. Now therefore be it resolved by the Bowling Green Township, County of Lincoln, State of Ohio, that it hereby adopts a comprehensive plan, which is included as a part of this resolution. This 20th day of August 2008 at 1-5490 Main Street, Brownsville, Ohio 43721. Trustee Hubb made a motion to accept the resolution prepared by the Lincoln County Planning Commission and read into the record. Motion seconded by Damian Muren. All in favor, motion carried. Under correspondence, trustee Corpenney received notification from the park committee that they've received a grant from Operation Roundup, an amount of $1,704. He's also received document from the engineer's office showing township right of way. Received a letter from John Parker requesting a meeting to review recommendations to the playground. Trustee Hubb would like to attend meeting also. Requested Lincoln County Planning Commission send letters to trustees. Fiscal officer correspondence, letter from FEMA about the storm damage. She will attend the meeting. Zoning inspector notified trustees there is a violation at 1-4124 National Road, two houses on one lot. Zoning inspector gave them 30 days to comply. One from issued at 1-6436 National Road for rebuild, remodel. And then there needs to be a junk car meeting on September 11th at 7:00 PM. Per committee, Nicole reported there was one building rental. The brick, the big bricks came in and the small ones will be in soon. The committee applied for the Operation Roundup grant. They requested $2,701 and received $1,704 for Hurricane Spinner to replace the merry-go-round. Next meeting will be September 18th. Under unfinished business, trustee Hubb volunteered to take care of the trash issues for the next three months. Drug testing will be tabled until trustees can review info from prosecutor. Driving record forms have all been filled out. Culvert inventory, trustee Corpenney received a copy of the last inventory the engineer's office has had, has but hasn't had any chance to look at it. Trustee Hubb said he could take care of the trash that was, said that he took care of the trash that was dumped on Guthridge Road. Trustee Hubb asked trustee Corpenney if he got a quote on the gutters. Trustee Corpenney had not gotten a quote. He wanted the other trustees to look at it. New business, 90-day employee review of the new employees. Trustee Muren said he hasn't had any problems with any of the employees. Donnie Efnor said his shift has changed and doesn't want to work for the township anymore. Trustee Hubb made a motion to remove Donnie Efnor from payroll. Trustee Muren seconded the motion. All in favor. That's what I have it now.
I believe I voted present on that.
And then you said yes.
No, I said, you said you voted present, and I said yes. The vote is present, so that's what it should say.
Make things too complicated. Just say yes or no.
I'd suggest you review the rules and how a present vote works.
That's the way we've been doing it. If there's different rules, then why didn't you mention that when you were elected four years ago?
There's no different rules.
Public comment, Bart Slick didn't think the merry-go-round would be removed. There were several residents that do not feel it should be removed. Trustee Corpenney stated that the park committee has done everything in the public. Dave Skinner asked if they could keep both pieces of equipment. Trustee Corpenney says that the merry-go-round isn't up to code. Trustee Hubb said the park would have to be extended in order. I'll be back.
That's reading here is what Debbie has. Dave Skinner asked if they could, if both pieces, they could keep both pieces of equipment. Trustee Corpenney said that the merry-go-round is not up to code. Trustee Hubb said the park would have to be extended in order to do that. Barb asked trustee's opinion about the merry-go-round. They both said their kids play on it. Patty West asked if the park rules that shoes, if the park rules that shoes must be worn on the playground. The trustee said it isn't on the rules. Mrs. West asked how zoning violations were taken care of. How they're reported or spotted while driving around. Zoning inspector said both, Mrs. West and their, zoning inspector said both. Mrs. West said there has been the same junk car in the same places for 16 years. The fire department is still being called on them and they don't have a fire. Mark Burgess said the trustees work for the public and would like to know if trustee Hubb has been suspended or anything. Trustee Hubb said he won't be talking about his personal matter to the table upon advice from his lawyer. Will Kern said the S-curve sign on Cooperida Road is manable. Trustee Hubb said he received a call from Mr. Love that the tree trimming company hit it. Barb's league feels there should be signs stating, stating when you enter a zone area on our roads. Trustee Hubb made a motion to pay bills, sign court orders, and bank tickets and, and the bank statements. Trustee Muren seconded the motion. Motion carried. His lawfully certified the amount of $177,499.95. Is lawfully appropriate to pay the bills by the fiscal officer? Any additions or corrections?
First meeting, there's two from the park committee.
No additions or corrections on that, I don't have any. Park committee meeting that is held on September 18th, 2012. The park committee meeting started at 7:00 PM, the township called on September 18th. The grant the park committee received does not cover the cost of shipping and installation. The park committee would have to pay approximately $800 to cover that cost. Nancy Corpenney motioned for the park committee to pay for the shipping and installation cost for the new Hurricane Spinner. Nicole Youngkins seconded a motion passed. Once the order is placed, it will take five weeks for it to be delivered. This places the installation in mid-October. We have received all the bricks for the base of the flagpole. There are 70 bricks total, large, small, blanks. The park committee did get 70, 57 of them free. Barb said that Mr. Collins and Mr. Brawley are willing to help with the digging and pouring of the concrete. Other volunteers will be needed. A list of materials for this project will need to be put together. The projected date for the brick installation is October 6th. Prior to this date, the topsoil and the concrete will need to be poured. If the weather is not cooperative, the rain date will be October 20th. Jeff Corpenney and Barb Wiseman met with a guy from risk management. He said that the word required, that the words required be replaced with recommended on the sign. He also said to add the phrase "play at your own risk" and the playground closes at dark on the sign. He suggested there be contract information, contact information if something were to happen or someone were to find something wrong with the equipment. Other suggestions that the risk management guy came up with, but the park committee does not find necessary, were that the playground was meant for kids ages 5 to 12 and that no bicycle helmets are allowed on playing equipment. He also mentioned a checklist for the playground so that we can inspect the equipment and make sure that there are no visible problems. Jeff Corpenney thinks it would be a good idea to do a walk-around each one to check the equipment and ground. Jeff Corpenney is willing to write a draft checklist. Nancy Corpenney motioned to accept all the changes on the sign and that the risk management has asked us to do. Barb Wiseman seconded motion passed. Park committee is aware that the swings are not compliant and that, and that they, and the bolts need to be replaced. They are aware that they need to be changed but do not have the prices at the time, so a decision could not be made. Jeff Corpenney asked if we wanted to get eight swings or if we just wanted to replace the six that are already there and add a larger swing for adults where there is already a space empty. He also asked if we wanted to bring wooden swing, bring the wooden swing out of the park in for the winter so that it wasn't further worn down. Nancy Corpenney motioned that Jeff Corpenney remove the wooden swing on October 31st to winterize and store it for the winter months. Nicole Youngkins seconded motion passed. This will help it last longer. There was a discussion about who is to mow the grass at the park. Do we have volunteers do it or do the trustees or the workers of the township? Barb Wiseman said that only half the township mowers are working. Barb doesn't think that the volunteers should have to use their own lawnmower. However, she said that Howard Wiseman will be willing to use his lawnmower as long as he gets gas or reimbursed for gas. Nicole Youngkins mentioned that this issue was brought up earlier in the air. It was said that volunteers shouldn't move this liability issue if something were to happen when they did it and the trustees and workers wouldn't mow it. Jeff Corpenney did say that a few years ago that they did, that they did okay, a few years ago, they did, that they had volunteers mow it.
You did get okay from the lawyer, that's what I should say.
There will be community in Weenie Rose Potluck, October 27th at noon. Please bring a dish to share with everyone. There will be, this will be in the newspaper because we would like for it to be community-based. We are relying on word of mouth and is also be posted on online, so please share with your family, friends, and neighbors. Trick or treat, beggars night, we hope to come on October 30th from 5:30 to 7:00. There will be a costume contest held at the shelter house from 5:00 to 5:30. There will be prizes for the best costumes. We will also need three impartial judges. If you are interested in being a judge, please talk to Barb Wiseman. There will also be a little area set up for a photo op. The next park committee meeting will be on November 20th at 7:00 PM. Nancy Corpenney motioned to adjourn the meeting at 8:00 PM. Barb Wiseman seconded, motion passed. Very good. We'll take five-minute recess. Rock, paper, scissors. Move on to guest speakers, do we have any guest speakers?
I just wanted to reset for the cemetery or?
Yeah, I just had a personal call that I'm a little bit. I'm sure everybody in the, realizes that the national election is about to be voted on. And I'd just like to say that after we send allegiance to the flag of the United States, if we keep this man that's in there, and I call him a man, four more years as he's president, what he thinks he is, we won't be able to say pledge to the allegiance of the United States for long.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Maybe another guest. We'll move on to correspondence.
Okay. Have the invitation, did you all receive that for the? We received notice that the salt, we were, the state was awarded a salt contract. It is going to be $49.68 this year versus $60.59 cents last year per ton. Yeah, I was surprised too. I received the annual report from IIO Plan Risk Management. If anybody wants to look at that. Received a staff report from the Lincoln County Planning Commission. That was it.
And then the porch wall looks dead anyway? Yep.
I've got several notes here. A lot of people called this month. Some of it we're gonna need to put on the agenda where appropriate. Up here on First Street, and that hub called, we need to do something with the tree up there. And they were one of the last ones to get power back on, but the, it's a widow maker up there and they need an answer because they're working with their insurance people about getting their settlement and everything, but we have to do something with that tree.
Does that have a tree that's in the power line?
Part of that tree was, came down the line there.
Yeah, they'd asked me about it and I told them absolutely nothing will touch it. It was in the power line, so is it still in the power line? Did you go look at it?
I haven't been up there since the storm, but she called me and the board needs to address it. It's in our right of way in past practice, I know. I've tried to get a policy on that, we don't have one, so we're gonna have to address that particular tree.
It's touching power, we're absolutely not touching it.
Well, then, you know, you wanna do like, in the past, you've hired people to do it if you didn't want to do it ourselves.
Take a look at it.
So we'll take a look at it, see.
I thought if it was touching the power line, you could call the power company.
But they do, they need it addressed because they've got a young child living in there we need to take care of. But that's, also got a call from a resident. I guess you had to call someone on the park committee because it came down, couldn't find our names and stuff. I don't know why it keeps disappearing. I had put my business card in the door and it's gone. I know that you, at one point you had a list there, but we need our contact information.
That's not there.
Because they don't need to call the park committee, only thing that finds a sign back there in park committee. But with that one, Guthridge Road, apparently there's some pretty deep holes that need to be addressed on Guthridge. Several calls about Cooperida Road. I see the signs fixed now, but I did go and look on Cooperida. There's the one big culvert that's towards the end, almost like 90% plugged up. That needs taking care of. And I keep hearing complaints about all the trees that are still there, so at some point I'd like to discuss that with the board and get it done. Bob West contacted me, he has concerns of some kind of activity over there on Israel Laurel Hill. I refer him if it had to do with the roads, it's a county road, and also suggests he'd talk to someone about soil and water, but I'm not quite sure what that's about. Mr. Collins, Howard Collins, has contacted me again. He wants an update from the board on what he's calling the West property situation. I don't know exactly what that is because last month attorneys did come in and they said, oh, files were closed, so if you've got some insight on that with. I was under the impression there were no other active files.
You'd have to get some more information probably to ask what he's talking about.
Well, he's, he's talking about, he has concerns with automobiles and implements and things on the property, so that's something.
Or violent, you know, car complaint or anything like that? Are you asking that?
I'm asking you, has there been a case on that?
Not that I can remember.
Right. I'm surprised, you guys didn't get the notice from the planning commission?
Yeah.
Just so everybody knows, the Lincoln County Planning Commission, the next step of the comprehensive plan, September 27th, 2012, there's a public hearing at 6:30. September twenty seventh, two thousand twelve, there's a public hearing at six thirty. Uh, the general regular meeting starts at seven, they're showing on the agenda that our part is during the regular meeting. Item number eight, approved motions and resolution two thousand twelve dash oh one seven to adopt the Bowling Green Township Comprehensive Plan and make recommend, recommendation of board commissioners. That is a public meeting. Uh, I attended the Licking County Extension Advisory Committee meeting, that was September seventeenth. On the Ohio Plan, there's some things we need to go over on that. Wanna put that on old bits, it's not listed there. Okay, but we need to try to do that tonight.
To add pork stuff. That's out of the park?
Part of it, yeah. Also, it's not on the agenda, the Public Works Commission, this is on twenty seven. Need to have that, I guess, sticking on a new business since we haven't done anything with that. And I think the last thing I got here is. At the last meeting we had here, it was the jump car meeting, I questioned the zoning inspector about several comments she had made that she said were legal opinions. Uh, turns out to be false, Amy sent this over today.
It wasn't Amy, it was the one after Fox, she never had to which one.
Uh, anyhow, the stance on that is, uh, I don't recall having a conversation with her about farm use vehicles because the statements were made about farm use.
Who did you get this from? You got this from Amy?
Yeah.
Well, I haven't seen anything about it, so if I get a copy of that.
It came today, she, I don't know, you can get it from her.
No, I said, where did you get this copy of it, Jeff? That's called a crap, right?
Sure is.
So they had to get me a copy of it.
Amy, talk to Amy. As far as I know, the relevant inquiry of whether or not a vehicle is a junkyard vehicle. It's whether the vehicle is one with three years. Excuse me, ma'am, I got the floor.
Ma'am, yeah, okay, boy, go ahead.
Jeff, just keep going.
Please don't interrupt me. I got all.
We don't need to discuss if I haven't seen a copy of it, Jeff, there, there's no real discussion here. I need a copy of it to look at it, I need to review it.
Is this a board meeting? Bring it to the board.
Then I wanna see a copy of it in front of me. Now I can have this copy, now we'll review it next meeting, thank you.
The rest of that are my copies from the zoning inspector. But what was said here is false.
So I need the top copy, right? Is that what I get?
The email, yeah.
One, two, three, turn it, page two and page three.
Thank you. Okay, is that all you had on the course one?
I believe that's it, yeah.
You want the reports, anything under safety?
Well, on the Ohio Plan, we did put that for new for old business, a lot of those are safety issues. Just don't forget, you got deadlines.
Fire company. Fire company. Zoning.
Uh, the J C zero zero six letter was sent out. So there'll be a meeting the second Tuesday.
What was it, J C zero zero six?
Yeah, twelve, J C zero zero six twelve.
Which case was that?
The last one we discussed, at the last jump car meeting.
Meridora?
Yes, black vehicle.
Do I know?
No, uh, I'd like to request an aerial, some aerial photos taken of, um, township violations. Aerial photos, approximately eighty dollars, I'd have to get all the information on where the person is, who the person that does the flights if you need that. It's something I like to do when the leaves on the trees are down, you can see better. The trees are a blockage.
Who said it costs approximately eighty dollars?
Yes, approximately eighty dollars.
Get the same photo off satellite, get off on YouTube and Google and everything else.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can. Exactly the same thing.
Eight dollars a pop now?
Not really.
It's evident that they've got everything on.
Well, let's see how I start with zoning and I'm on the commission.
Excuse me.
I do, no, there's no excuse for you.
Excuse me, we're not on the zoning commission.
You're zoning and I'm on the commission.
Hello.
So she's, she's trying to, no, uh-uh. You get the same exact photos from the satellites, there's no need to spend that money.
Sir, I'm sorry, thank you.
There's no need to spend that money.
Uh, a comment to Mr. Corpenning's. When, uh, Mr. Fox left, we had another one we'd come in, do you recall her name? I didn't write the notes down on her name, this is the one I talked to, I'm sorry.
Alan.
Alice. I did not talk to Amy.
We're supposed to base things off of legal opinions, not hearsay.
It was not hearsay, she is a prosecuting attorney, I talked to her, not hearsay.
Again, I asked for the written legal opinion, but she does not exist.
You asked who I talked to. I told you I talked to her, I didn't have it in writing.
I'm not gonna have arguments with you, ma'am.
Okay, boy. That's all I have.
So, thank you. Zoning board. Zoning appeals. Comprehensive plan.
Uh, we, Mark and Dean, I did attend the, uh, planning commission's meeting last night. They did approve our plan, it's going to the commissioners next.
They give you a date on that?
No, they will let me know when it's going to be. They're hoping to put it on the, uh, table agenda.
It's to the commissioners next. Hopefully in October?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Park committee. Anything here for the park committee? No.
We read, I'm not sure it's, the secretary couldn't be here tonight.
Nothing else.
Did you get the check from the operation grant?
Yes, I did.
I guess while we're talking about that park committee and you asked about that check. So you guys have already received the check, have you ordered the permit, do you know that yet? Yeah, volunteer.
You'd have to talk to Barb. They said it was gonna take five weeks to get in from the time they ordered.
So you signed it on the meeting, I guess, so did?
You were here too.
I got here late, you're right, I didn't hear that part. So did, did they order, the park committee ordered?
I don't know if she's contacted him or not.
Oh, because we haven't even discussed it with the board if we're gonna put it in, how we want to put it or?
We do need to discuss the disposal of it and I've got some suggestions on. The disposal of the, uh, the, uh, old, uh, merry-go-round.
I don't think we made a motion to take it out.
That's why I said we need to discuss it.
I'm not favoring taking it out. I've asked for, this, this will be the third month I've asked for information on a piece of equipment that the park committee has taken upon themselves to write a grant for, which is great because they got the grant. But this is the third month that I've asked for information on a new piece of equipment that they would like to put in and the third month has come and.
You had advantage, the last meeting was right there.
I did?
Yeah.
Really? I did not.
They never showed a, a specific piece of equipment that you guys purchased.
So what are you saying, you want to refuse the grant or send it one of them?
Well, we never discussed this with the board if, if we were gonna do this, Jeff.
Well. Discuss it then if you'd like.
Do you know something that I don't know here, I mean? Tell, tell me what you know, you're, you're, uh, you're part of the park, we're the park committee, so.
What would you like to know?
Wha- what are the, you know, what are, what's park committee's plans, yeah? They're just gonna rip out a piece of equipment?
I heard the meeting minutes, just like you did, it was part of the meeting minutes.
It, it didn't state, you know, that they were gonna take out a piece of equipment and put new pieces in. It said that they were gonna purchase a new piece and it's gonna take five weeks to come in.
I think you.
Said that they had to come up with another eight hundred dollars, yeah, I remember that.
I think that you should review the meeting minutes and if you've got something to discuss about it, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we're discussing this with the board here, until I see some, some information and some facts and, you know, some literature on this piece of equipment, nothing's coming out of that park, I'm sorry. Not on my boat.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go right to the Ohio Plan because one of the, it's a non-issue, uh, like I've stated several times. You can't purchase that piece of equipment now, it wouldn't be in compliance. It's very clear under the U S Consumer Product Safety Commission Handbook, which I've suggested you review. That that's not something that we can have.
Did you ensure that we need to remove it?
We waited for you to come to the meeting, you passed us. You asked us, at the last meeting, we got the letter that you wanted to have a meeting.
Correct.
And I asked you guys if you wanted to be included.
And I did, yes, I did, did you call?
Yes, I did.
You did, Jeff?
I did call.
You called and you told me that you were gonna have a meeting with John Parker.
Yes.
When was this?
I told you where the time was.
Really?
Yes, I did.
Because I did not get a phone call from you, Jeff.
Then I recorded it because I can prove it.
Please, please do. Most.
You drove by and put your personal trash in the dumpster, we, we, you got here like half an hour, twenty minutes early and I'm asking to just wait because you'd probably come back through.
Really?
Yes.
No, I never got a message from you, Jeff.
So you want the information that was retrieved, retrieved from the meeting or not?
No, I, I, first I wanna know why that, that you never made an attempt to call me.
I told you, I did.
You never dropped me an email or something like that.
I apologize, I lack of understanding.
You did. That was important, I wanted to be there, Jeff, because sometimes I can't take everybody's wardrobe or something. So go ahead, go with the information that, that Mr. Parker gave you. Did he say that we need to remove the, the merry-go-round?
I'm gonna repeat myself. The U S Consumer Product Safety Commission.
That's not what I asked you.
Yes, call him and ask him yourself.
Mr. Parker said that Bowling Green Township needs to remove the merry-go-round.
Call him, talk to yourself.
Mr. Parker said.
I don't speak for Mr. Parker, you call Mr. Parker yourself.
So, so answer, is that a yes or not? He said that we need to remove it or not?
Last time I was at a meeting, you didn't say it had to be removed.
If you wanna return the grant, you go right ahead and do so.
Can you just answer the question?
You guys are here for yourself.
He never answered the question, he never answers the question.
I thoroughly answered the question. Well, you know, I see the facts, Jeff, and, and I get some literature on this and, and they say that we have to remove this piece of equipment because, you know, the insurance company says we have to. It's not coming out, I'm sorry.
All of that information within hours of that meeting was posted online, you can go look at it yourself, it's all in video, I scan, everything on it. You had it in your hand, right there. Would you walk across the street and ask for whatever you didn't have?
No, because you wanna, how many times Barb told me she would get the information? Three times, yeah, three times she told me that, I've asked for three.
But you didn't walk over and cross the street and ask?
Barb said she would get to me, I don't need to go door to door knocking. So we're gonna move on, nothing, we're just gonna be standing on that, nothing.
Well, you're kinda leaving it up in the air, I don't know if Barb's contacting her, or Meyer is lying, or set the date or not, she's not here to ask her.
Well, I'm sorry, but it's not coming out of the park until we make a decision, you know?
So, do you want Barb to contact him or tell him that we don't want this?
I'll get some information first as well, I won't.
Well, you, it sounds to me like you need to be communicating with somebody.
Really? I've asked her three times, Jeff, the two business meetings in the park committee.
Same question they asked me, they have permission to talk, shut them up.
I've asked at three meetings for Barb, and every time she said she would get to me, okay, I have not seen it. Okay, and nor have I seen a writing where the, the insurance company says that we need to remove a piece of equipment because it's on site.
Did you bother to read the references that I showed you?
Yes, I, anything that you handed, Jeff, I, I look at.
Playground Product Safety Commission Handbook, have you reviewed it?
You got me a copy of that.
You can get it online, I think there's still one in the drawer over there.
You just, you just said, did I review the stuff that you gave me, you never got me a copy of that, yeah? I'm sorry.
You need to take it upon yourself to bring this information.
I'm sorry.
You're sorry for what?
So we're gonna move on.
That you keep it on the facts?
We're gonna move on. Nothing else on the park committee?
I think that you need to not even have an end.
Actually, we do, actually, we do, we do have.
Do you want that? You need to talk to Barb, find out if she contacted him or not, because if they've already scheduled to have it, you're gonna have to stop it. And you're gonna have to send that money back.
Maybe Barb should give me the information, like she said she would three times.
I'm gonna have an argument with you, it's something that you need to communicate with somebody else.
Sorry. Phone works both ways, right?
May I ask you a question?
Does it pertain to the park?
Yes, it does.
Okay, go ahead.
Doesn't the park committee have to bring their proposals to the trustees before they do anything like removing equipment or buying equipment?
That's what I thought.
They haven't removed any equipment.
I mean, I am not, I'm all for getting grant money, it's free money to the township. So we're gonna move on, until we get some facts here and.
My suggestion, so you don't wanna discuss, what, you don't wanna discuss what to do with existing merry-go-rounds?
It's staying right where it is?
And that's, are you gonna vote on that?
There's no vote, it's not going anywhere. One other thing on the park, I guess.
I suppose one is the board, but yeah, you're not even willing to vote with what your initiative is?
What's there to vote on, this piece of equipment already in place, why?
There's a piece of equipment coming to go in that spot, so exactly how are you gonna handle that?
And who said we're gonna put it in that spot?
You're, you're leaving it in limbo, you need to.
No, this has never been brought to the board that we were gonna remove a piece of equipment and put another piece of equipment, you know, in its place. Sure, do I know that the park committee got a grant for this equipment? Yes, do I know where they plan on putting it?
I do not. It's right over there in that schematic.
Is that over there in the box?
No. It's right over there.
I didn't hang anything on the wall, Jeff. Actually, that schematic, they're gonna put a right piece of equipment on it, is that correct? Somebody can't show by that.
I don't blame you.
I didn't pay attention to that.
I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, one other thing on the park committee real quick, um, what are we gonna do about taking care of the grounds on that? You know, I mean, does anybody have any, the weed's got two feet deep, I'm sure. Anybody have any suggestions? It was asked in the, in the midday that we, you know, discussed.
Well, I know I've done my fair share over the years and this season.
What have you done?
Shut up, Jack.
Hey.
No, hey, you tell him, he bounced off.
Hey, that's a lot of good questions.
The meeting minutes sent the case, one of the mowers wasn't working, but I.
Oh, Nick, very good.
It doesn't need that, it's running, I got them both running. So, we have, we have the equipment to take care of. So, and Harold helped me last time he came over, he did use his own mower. I prefer to use push mower because it's so small, you're turning around all the time. But if someone wants to be a volunteer and help, I went back and made sure the other one ran and it does. We've only got one or two more mowings this year. So I'd suggest if you have concerns, you know, next year we put a plan together, one of the best years ever had of lawn repairs.
One or two more times this year? I'll handle it. You'll handle it? No problem. But you, you did say that you and Harold mowed it last, this last time, correct?
Sure.
Um, was the trimmer broke? Was the weed trimmer broke?
Don't know, I didn't start up the trimmer while.
Because they're still two foot high weeds around the equipment up there.
Well, you, help yourself.
Yeah, I did it for ten times a year ago. Was there any compensation given to, um, Mr. Wiseman for coming over?
No, volunteer means volunteer.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, because I had a resident call and ask me, said that they had saw you and Harold after a moment and then after that had saw Harold coming over with a gas can and then walked back across the street with a gas can.
It was his can.
Okay, that's what, did you give him gas on the phone?
I sure did, I put it in his machine, he brought his machine over and helped us mow it, it's either in his machine or the one we're using.
Uh, excuse me, no, I want in this, excuse me, we have mowed, no, this is about the park, we have mowed this park for a lot of years. I have. And not once we took gas out of nothing. We brought our own gas, we used the mowers, everything else. And one guy come over, then you start giving him gas?
So now it's okay.
Now it's okay.
No, it's okay.
This has to do with park.
Oh, as long as it has to do with the park, it's okay.
No, I'm, I'm off to a poor ball again, but if it happens with that stuff, yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah, this is not, this is a ridiculous. I don't know what the relevance is.
What the relevance is, I, I don't get it.
The man offered to help this morning to start, he came over, I said, and he had a can, I filled it up, he helped me mow, we got it down. Now, if you'd have some communication over the season, instead of just mowing whenever you wanted to, I'd come down for the mow break, if he didn't mind. Never said a word, I'm not keeping track, I don't care. You want me to mow it?
Oh, I'll do it, I don't care.
Is it a contest?
No, I'd say it's okay.
Two or three times. So what's the problem?
The problem is you gave somebody fuel that the township paid for. That's why I see a problem.
Do you see a problem?
I do.
I see a problem of communication, of you not communicating with, with, when you're doing and not doing.
But this is a township park that is owned by.
But this is a township park, that is owned by the township.
He didn't mow his own grass, did he?
So what's the big deal about putting a gallon or two or gasoline in this guy that volunteered to use his mower to mow the park?
I'm not patting myself on the back, tickling my horn, whatever's been said in the past, okay? But I can tell you, a commercial lawn care company come in here and mowed it ten times this year, okay? So they have guys on the clock, they have twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment, plus their fuel, do you know what they got compensated for doing that? Zip. That's what they got, okay?
Does he want their own gas?
What's that?
They bring their own gas?
A hundred percent. A hundred percent.
Great. And whose company is it?
That's a big mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I had guys on the clock, I had twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment, wear and tear on my equipment, and fuel, okay?
Great.
I don't care, I did it because I wanted to do it.
You don't care, that's a big deal.
I volunteered to do it, is why I did it. If you volunteer to do it, you don't, you don't expect anything in return.
Did he expect the gas?
Yes, he wants gas.
Do I expect it?
I said, did he expect it?
I take full responsibility for giving the guy a half gallon of gas.
Well, I say absolutely no more.
And somebody's gotta change for it.
No, it's not about that, I just say absolutely no more, we're not going around making our own rules, Jeff.
Oh. Really?
Yeah, okay, not making your own rules.
He had ten, two, five.
Harold, thanks for coming over and helping out.
Yeah, thanks, Harold, I do appreciate it, most definitely, we'll take any volunteer help. I sent my two cents, so, whatever you guys have to do with that. If you just wanna give gas out to anybody that wants to come down here.
You better weigh in on that, Ben, if you do your fair share this, uh, quickly.
My fair share, what, what are you on?
I was coming to watch and drink.
I'm working on keeping the other mowers going.
There are volunteers yelling their bag of gas.
Let's move on.
All right, do anything else on the park committee? So you're gonna leave that open and not do, or how do you want to finish this? What are we leaving open, Eddie? Yeah, we're not giving out gas. Hey, come on down, see if we should meet in place, thank you.
Want your vote to be in, man?
We're not giving out gas anymore.
I don't think anyone gave out any gas, that gas was used to mow that park. It's not a personal park.
If that's the case, why did he run with more, if I didn't put the gas in the porch?
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we're straight here, the grass is gonna get mowed for the rest of the season, correct? You just volunteered to do it, right?
I don't know, you said you contracted with a, a big company that was coming in New England.
I didn't say contracted with anybody.
Really?
Really.
Okay, so how did they, how did they get the gig?
The gig?
Yeah.
They volunteered.
What are you talking about, Jeff?
So you wanna toot your horn, but yet you don't wanna finish out the year with it?
He tooted his horn one time and...
You know? I, I not toot my own horn, you know, and, and I like doing that kind of stuff, you know, because that's what we're supposed to do in the community, you know? But not one time did, did anybody at the park committee say, "Thank you." "I appreciate it, let me come help you", or something like that. So you're gonna take care of the park for the rest of the year, correct, is that what you're saying, Jeff?
Wow.
Can I ask a question?
Does it pertain to do on the park?
Does, does the township have one of those, uh, old-fashioned, bleached push mowers?
No, we actually, no.
So the gas was gonna go in one mower or the other, right?
Right.
Then, then move on, move on, Ben.
We are moving on.
It doesn't sound like it, carry on the dang good meeting.
Well, we're talking about the gas.
You guys aren't having a meeting, though. You guys just wanna argue back and forth.
So we're gonna move on, I don't have to do this, are you ready, Dan? Jeff, can I hear the park committee? Yes or no? Or are you gonna say present? We're gonna get unfinished business, trash mandate. You guys have anything on trash mandate?
Sure do.
You do? What do you have?
Uh, you put yourself in charge of it, if you have a report or anything?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can go first.
No, you're in charge.
Go ahead, Jeff, I'm, you can go first. Do you wanna go, or?
I'd like to hear what you got.
I had, uh, received a complaint from a resident last month, um, about them being overcharged for their trash bill. Um, so I requested a copy of it, it took several weeks and a roundabout way to get to it. Um, I did look at the bill, it was, they were being overcharged, so I called Big O. Um, I spoke with Big O on nine twelve, uh, two thousand and twelve, uh, about the bill that was, um, too much. They told me on the same day, they'd also spoke with another trustee about the same bill, um, which I was kinda confused, because I was supposed to be the one that was in charge of, I guess, corresponding with the trash company, but other than that, um, they said that they had resolved the problem with, the resident they had a problem with, um, they credited their account, um, to make it right with them, so they led me to believe that they were, um, in good standing with them, so, that's all I had. I also tried to speak with the new rep for the township, which is David White. Couldn't get a hold of him, um, the old reps had, they only tend, doesn't work for Big O anymore. Um, I'm still waiting on David to get back with me to see if they could do a yearly report, um, and come in and do a, I guess, a yearly follow-up with us, too. Let us know everything. Cool. Um, on top of that, I had received some other complaints of CMI still picking up in the township. So I contacted prosecutor, um, and she said she need to look into some things, and I actually called her again this morning, to see if she figured it out, and then she got back with me, and she said, "For our discussion today, um, the statutory site under higher vice period for enforcement of trash contract, uh, it states that if a hauler violates an exclusive tra, single trash hauler contract, um, then offending hauler shall be fined a hundred fifty dollars for the first offense and five hundred dollars for each subsequent offense. Each collection, transfer, or disposal is counted as separate offense, any fines collected under this section must be deposited within Township's Waste Collection Fund. Uh, since you also asked how the money would be collected, it's my understanding that once the offending trash hauler is put on notice and refuses to stop collecting trash, our office would have to fi, file a complaint to enforce the exclusivity of the trash contract. We would ask any, we would seek an injunction to stop CMI for collecting trash if the court would award fines based on the number of violations that have occurred, um, if this matter is brought for the board for retribution." So what she said was, um, if we have received complaints, which I have, um, I guess we have, uh, about another hauler picking up, we need to first send him a letter, um, which we talked about...
That was already done.
We talked about previous meetings, that has already been done, a letter was sent to CMI. So Amy, um, said that we need to discuss this with the board, and, um, either make a, um, I guess you put it, either make a motion to send them another letter, to give them another chance, or just proceed forward with letting her office handle it. So, or take no action at all.
I'd say make a motion, let, let, uh, prosecutor should take care of it.
Handle it. And there was a letter sent, um, they received it, it was certified, so. Do you have any discussion on that?
That's all you got? Okay, well, just to back up a little bit to last year, I put in a public record request at the time, and asked you for copies, uh, and then, when the prosecutor was here, you guys couldn't remember, but then Jenny did find the letter, and she found the certified mail that CMI and D both contacted already. Uh, we, everybody heard what the prosecutor had to say. Where's that thing you brought us, where's the, a report that, um, Waste Management is picking up, there's a report that Rumke is, and we know Republic is, um, so...
We're not talking about commercial counts, we're talking about residential.
Uh, I've got the floor, if you don't mind.
No, I'm just...
Let me finish up.
We're not talking about commercial counts.
I'm not either, we're talking about residential garbage, if you don't mind.
I don't mind, Jeff, I would just give you a little pointer, but go ahead.
I don't need your pointers, I need the floor.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so this letter that was sent to CMI, it's the same letter that's been provided, um, I'm gonna read what CMI already got, so everybody knows, I asked for it last year.
You know, let me, let me stop right there, let me stop right there, I know you have the floor, but, but we don't need to read everything that we've already seen. This is a board meeting, this is for the board to discuss, I've seen it, you've seen it, Dan's seen it, Jenny's seen it, so we don't need to read this a hundred times.
You don't, but they do.
This is a, this is a township board meeting.
This is a form letter that went to Mr. Shackelford. And the reason I'm gonna read this letter is because I've got these others pre-prepared, that need to also go out, okay?
Okay.
Now, this one...
No, wait, 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 I got a question for you. So these are for other trash...
What's your questions, let me have it.
No, these are for other trash haulers, right? This is for Waste Management? How come I wasn't contacted? Did you, did you contact me?
This is a board meeting.
Right.
I'm bringing it now, you heard what the prosecutor had to say, now please don't interrupt me. You can have all the time you want, but let me have the discussion that I'm trying to bring forward.
I'm the president of the board, if I have questions, I'm gonna ask you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Your questions will probably be answered if you'll listen to me and let me have the floor. I'd appreciate a common professionalism, okay? See, maybe you lose track. This goes back to late last year, I asked for public records about whether CMI was contacted or not. They were, it has been established so. This is the same form letter, this particular one went to Mr. Shackelford, and it was about the location in Dogwood Lakes Edition. Same letter is here. Uh, it states in this letter, prepared by, by the prosecuting office, that the fiscal officer should send it and to send it certified. At the time, I asked the board whether they were gonna have a motion or not to do this, Mr. Huff said they didn't need a motion, and the fiscal officer just needed to send it certified. If you want a motion, fine, I'll move forward.
Wait, let me correct you on this, because you didn't, no, you didn't state everything. You said the letter sent out was for the Dogwood Lakes Edition, I'm looking at the same letter right here, okay? It states Dogwood Lakes, National Road, and Bounders Road.
Okay.
Okay, so put all the information in there, I can't skip any.
Okay, well, if you'd let me read the letter, we wouldn't have had that problem with it.
Just go ahead.
All right? Now, the board received at our junk car hearing, the one that shows a, do you have it? She brought copies of it, it, it shows that Waste Management is picking up on Honda Hills Road. It's a form letter, the lines go where the location is, we've got Republic picking up on National Road in Brownsville, Ohio. We've got Waste Management picking up on Honda Hills Road, Bowling Green Township. We've got Rumke, uh, allegedly picking up on places on National Road. So I moved that these three letters be sent, just like that other one was, to the fiscal officer vice-certified, as it stated, the form letter prepared by the prosecutor. And I did call, and I imagine you're talking about Mr. Levingston's bill. When I found out after the junk car hearing that you hadn't done anything, I called and talked with him.
That I hadn't done anything, Jeff, I hadn't got a copy of the bill. I asked for a copy of it.
Which really brings us to a security issue here, it's not the first time that something has come up missing down here, okay?
Did you already take the logs?
I told you, I brought it down, after the meeting, we had a discussion, I told you I brought it down here, and you indicated you had done nothing about contact enough. Jenny has a copy of it, I told you that too, you can get it, you can get it printed out, I scanned it.
When I call somebody and I have a complaint about something, I want factual evidence, Jeff, I want... I wanna say, look, this is what I'm looking at, this is what I have, I did not have that at the time. Two days later, I got a copy from Jenny, because you couldn't email it to me, do you remember that?
I left it down here, Ben. Like I told you, if things are missing down here, we got a problem, we had signs missing, we've had things on the inside of the door missing, contact information, you know, that's a whole issue within itself.
That's the thing, it's probably not the least stuff down here, then.
How else would you suggest that you get things?
How often do you send things, Jeff? You could've sent it to me via email, right? Carbon copy, you know I got it, sent it to yourself.
I really think you're picking a straw to the end, Ben.
No, not.
The fact of the matter is, they, they told me that they, um, had to credit Mr. Levingston back for six months of service. I wanna follow up with them and make sure that they did do that, we don't know the extent of this. We don't know how many other people are being overcharged. The disturbing part, in one of the calls I made, and I haven't had the man that they say is in charge get back with me yet, except they had to email the man to tell him I need to talk to him, so apparently he's not even located, I don't know. But what I requested was a copy of, a list of all the bills from everyone in the township, and how much they've been paying from the beginning of this contract. Haven't got that yet.
I don't think they can give that to you.
Then they went on to tell me... Yeah. They went on to tell me that if a resident did not fill out that form, even if they were an existing customer, that they were not gonna adjust that rate, so they put the onus on the resident, even if they were their client already, and if they did not send it back, they didn't get that adjustment. So I suggest, now, one of the, one of your false premises, when you went into this debacle, was that it was gonna save the township people money. Now, Mr. Leving, now that's just a false, it's that people are paying less, people are paying more. But we have a responsibility to these people that you took in contract with, and told them what, who they had to get their hauler from, you have a responsibility to try to get information to find out who else might be being overcharged, because we don't know how widespread this might be, because they're not taking any efforts to find out with their existing customers. So along those lines, I prepared a notice I think we should put in the, in the papers, because if someone's being overcharged, uh, you know, they, they said it's the responsibility of the resident, I don't agree with that.
I do.
So, this is a notice I prepared, that I think should be put in all the publications, to try to get the word out to people. Public notice, attention Bowling Green Township residents, it's been brought to the attention of the board of trustees that Big O has overcharged on contracted residential trash service within the township. This covers does not coincide with the township's current contract with Big O. If you're being charged more than the monthly rate of, and you need to fill in what the contract amount is, please contact the township fiscal officer at her phone number, and the board of trustees will assist in getting your overpayment refunded. Because I, I feel like we need to do this to make an effort. You know, people that are being overcharged, like Mr. Levingston, have no idea, and Big O is apparently not taking any efforts to, to attract the payments. So I moved that we, that we put this public notice in the local papers. I've got it written out for you, anything?
I don't want it. Excuse me, if I can make a comment, if you're putting it in the legal sections, there's no resident going to read it. Does anybody read the paper at all anymore? If you put it into a letter to the editor, it may get read, and it doesn't cost anything to write a letter to the editor.
In which paper are you suggesting, Dustin? The Advocate, the Beacon, or what?
I, I would be happy to get the Beacon, both.
I'll be happy to draft a letter to put in there.
I don't want that column. What you should do is tell the editor, and they'll make a big deal out of the equipment, and write it up.
What phone number do you need to have, and there's a need to contact the bills?
Shouldn't they call the trash guy? Why would they call the clerk?
I, I moved my motions, uh, I'll be requesting on the record that I feel these letters should be sent. Didn't get a second, moved a motion to try to notify the public through a public notice of these contract violations that we know of, didn't get a second, so, we can move on if you'd like.
I choose my house, probably, or, uh, I mean, sorry.
Had the board moved on trash, since it's on trash? Did you have, I asked the Levingtons, whether they, they get no refund?
What have they got?
Because I, I talked to them.
What have they got, what, no refund?
Yeah, that, that they were gonna get, you know, money back, and how much? Because I talked to them, just before the meeting.
They credited their account six months.
And Big O never talked to them, never said anything, they've never got notified of anything.
They credited their account six months?
Well, that's what they say, but what I'm saying is, you would think after this happened, that either the township or Big O would call them and say, "Hey, by the way, you know, this is how much money we're gonna credit your account."
I called Harold.
I just called him before the meeting, because I wanted to know what the latest was on this deal that I brought, I mean, I'm the one who brought it down. He said he never heard a word.
Did you have a copy of that bill?
Yeah, I get, remember, I told you, I gave it to Jeff, because...
I talked to Harold and, and asked him to look at his next bill.
I wanted to make sure it got back to him, I didn't have a copier with me, it's his personal bill, I don't wanna take somebody's personal bill, and, you know, I wanna make sure it got back to him, and then get back to you. Uh, but my point is, you're saying they're gonna credit his account, he has, as of tonight, he has not heard a word from anybody about crediting...
I don't think we've had...
But Big O hasn't, apparently.
But Big O hasn't, apparently.
Big O, or nobody's talked to him.
I have.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking to person that actually had, you know.
I'm gonna credit them.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, is, is they're saying something, but, like you said, you wanna see the truth, to verify.
I contacted them, and they said yes, you know, that we credited his account six months. You know, we fixed the problem, corrected the problem, I don't think there's any other avenue to go there. I mean, there's no other route to keep-
Well, to me, customer service means, somebody should've gotten ahold of him and told him, hey, we screwed up, and here's what we're gonna do. That's good customer service. Or, as a trustee, if you find out that they did that, that you contact them and tell them what they found out. But none of that happened.
I'm sure they'll get, they'll, they'll relax.
That's all I'm saying, you know, if you're gonna be customer service oriented, which I would think everybody would be in this day and age, that would happen, and it didn't happen.
Do you have dates or, uh, address of all these, of all these pickups?
All, all of those are coming, uh, the one on Honda Hills, I don't know the address.
You have an actual statement from somebody, or something written that says-
You know, frankly, Ben, there's a lot of people that, that don't wanna get their names.
No, that's fine, but you have-
I've had a lot of comments this month, people wanna know if they're safe if they give their names. Valid concerns, they don't wanna make questions. There's all kinds of people that-
The prosecutor asks us for complaints that we need our reds.
Complaints. We didn't have any personal ones.
Or, a, um- Fuck yeah, or a picture.
I didn't get a picture you put in the trash in there, so, you know. You know you don't, so-
Sure, and I, and I think so.
Send the letter, and have the, do, do due diligence.
So, I have a question. Why don't you put a sign out here on this window, Jeff, you make it up, you're a sign person. And put there, if you're not getting the right charges for Big O's trash, call them and get the right. Do it right there, people will see it.
It won't reimburse me anything, I do it.
What, what'd you say?
Also, make up a sign, you can call them.
I said, it won't reimburse me anything.
Well, yeah.
You can't be joking around with this.
Well, let's, let's move on these, and see if it's still in the trash, and we can move on. You know, I mean, if we send it to them, they're not getting the farm, they're just, they're just stopped service, so if they're not servicing, then that's fine. Waste Management, I'm not sure whether that would be on Honda Hills, but if the board wants to send that-
Where's, where's the picture? We had a picture somewhere.
See, the other end of Honda Hills is-
Like you tend to-
Where's that home?
What's that?
Where's the home that's in the picture?
There was no address on the, on the letter.
That, that home's not on the, our, the road, part, part we could care of.
Really?
Where is it? You didn't get it somewhere, so I don't know Honda Hills.
I see Honda Hills gives out that-
She's got a picture.
Oh, I get it.
There's still no address. There's no address. Can you tell this house why this is- Where this house is?
I think I know who it is, but I'm not sure.
Because I, that there's not, forty to Somerset.
Jeff's taking pictures over by this correction, Dave, just up here.
If you, uh, if you send those letters and they're not here, what's the problem?
What's that? You said the letter would be around here.
If they're not doing it, we have to say, if they're not doing it. If they are doing it, then they're doing it.
Where's, where's Rumpke picking up in Brownsville? I have Republic picking up on National Road in Brownsville. Is it National Road, or?
Yeah, a lot of people, I've seen, I've seen the Rumpke cans myself, but I don't know if this Rumpke is taking them or not, I've seen the cans.
I think we need to-
Wanna be fair to everybody?
Yeah, you got it.
I wanna make sure it's taken by residential.
It ain't gonna hurt any of the citizens, everything.
If you're gonna proceed one company and not the others, there's not a personal motive.
I'm not taking any action.
Well, I'll make a motion that we can just send these three out, these three out, maybe we make them up, and put, you know, whatever's on there, Honda Hills, National Road, and National Road.
I'll second the motion.
But we need to put for residential pickup, and then it already states within Bowling Green.
The form letter that is prepared by Eric Fox, and that's what you need, Jeff.
They're not, yeah, they're not gonna get fined, if they pick it up, they'll stop, it's not-
So, is there a motion to send the letters?
Yes.
Are you making the motion, or seconding the motion?
I had made the motion.
No, I'll second it. Please, thank you, send it out. Anything else on the draft mandate?
Hang on, gotta do roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, they're all true. We can, we can take it off in ten minutes, then.
I, I don't think the issue's solved, is it? You're gonna need updated. Sure, you give a report every month, since you're-
Sure, I do that, we don't need to add one agenda. You know, we need to talk about, talk about, we don't know.
Are you gonna follow up with the status of CMI, since you've already notified, huh?
Uh, we actually need to make a decision tonight.
To send it to the prosecutor.
A board of commissioners. We're going to, we're gonna send another letter, give them another chance. And we're going to send it off to the prosecutor, let them take care of it, we're just gonna not worry about it.
Well, we definitely need legal counsel regardless of, of, so.
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, in the case of CMI, picking up within the township, that we've already sent them one notice. So, I'll make a motion that we just go ahead and hand it over to the prosecutor, let them do their part.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Drug testing, um, we don't have anything on that, they said we can do random drug testing, talked about that last meeting, um-
They disputed that they, in two thousand and ten, that they had sent all the township's legal opinion on that. Do we have a copy of that opinion?
I gave you guys all a copy of that last meeting. Because she had sent it to you back then.
It's probably in my hat, I probably have it in there.
So, I'll just go ahead and take out.
I think, I think we should, I think we should move forward.
I don't want it, but-
By a motion.
I mean, no, I-
Put on the agenda, it's thoroughly-
Testing for what?
Just thoroughly read what they, the package they gave, be prepared to make a decision and vote on it next month.
You know, well, they already said we can't do random. You know, we can do if somebody got in an accident, or we, what they said, if they suspected, if they show up to work late consistently, stuff like that.
Well, why don't we move to have them draw up an actual resolution for Bowling Green Township?
We do that, we wanna ask them.
And then have it to the next meeting.
Ask them to do it.
Sure. I'm gonna move motion. Is it to contact them? I moved, I contacted prosecutor, asked them to give us a resolution draft to implement.
I'll second it.
Hope so, that was his issue.
Roll call, Dan? Ben? Jeff?
Yes. Motion passed. Two yeas, one present. Driving record.
We often all form, we're just- That's all we need to do?
Yeah.
Take out, got that? Very good. Inventory. It's been on there and on and on there, you know.
I've got a working, uh, file here in cover and inventory, anytime you wanna discuss it, or do anything.
Beat the dead horse on this presentation, so. It doesn't need your honor, pay it off.
I'm taking it off. Inventory and cover.
Yes. One other thing that I don't think, that you wanna bring up, about the Ohio risk management part?
Yeah, originally, this was sent to Jenny several months ago. We talked about this a little bit when, uh, you sent us the letter. I did call you, I left your message, I did record it. I've learned from this job not to take anything for granted, document everything, including a call to somebody, that said they wanted it, they got it. When we met with Mr. Parker, um, there's still four items as a board, we need to put in writing to send back to them. General opinion information, uh, code dash oh one suggests that we establish and document, and you guys have copies of this.
Yes.
Establish and document a process to review the criminal background applicants as part of employee application procedures. So, as a board, we have to address that, we'll send something to the Ohio Risk Management Plan of our intentions as a board on that. So, instead of me going to number two, can we talk about number one, and how we'd like to proceed or not proceed on that? Establish and document a process to review the criminal background of applicants as part of your employee application procedures.
These are just recommendations, also, that doesn't mean that you have to do all of them.
Honestly, Jeff, I think anyway, the township's ever hired, but people know, you know, I mean, they know if they're, you know, good or bad, or what their work, work ethic is like, and-
We need a narrative to provide that.
We're not going to do that.
You wanna put that into, you know?
We're not going to.
I'll be happy to send it in, or whatever, what do you, this is, uh, twelve dash oh one, what's the narrative?
No, no further discussion on that, it's a recommendation, I don't see any need to do that.
Okay.
Twelve dash oh one.
Do this by motion, then we can go on down through it.
We do that.
So, you, you, what are you moving to take no action on twelve dash oh one? You got it, there it is. I mean, I'll second the motion for discussion. Keep moving.
Let's keep moving, do twelve dash zero two.
Yeah, I seconded your motion. The discussion that I have on it is that I think we should proceed and do as suggested. Because when we send this in, it shows due diligence, it also leads to hopefully getting our risk management costs down. If something would ever happen with these suggestions and we didn't do anything, leaves us in a liability situation, so. My opinion on is that we should do something-
It's a recommendation, they say we had to do it, I don't see a need for all that stuff.
So, you both shared your opinion, let's move on.
Yes. Twelve dash zero two.
Well, if we're moving on, then we need to vote on the, Ben's motion.
He didn't make a motion.
I thought, I thought it was. Okay, well, if I'm making a motion, I move that we do establish and document a process to review the criminal background applications of employees.
Is there a second to any motion? No second.
Okay, without a second, without a second, what do you want me to put on the narrative that's required to send in?
No action taken.
Don't feel it's necessary at this time.
Okay. How about if I put the board vote we just had on there? Motion was made to proceed, the board voted two to zero not to proceed. Does that work for you?
How about you just put no action was taken?
There was an action taken, the board took an action and made a decision.
There was a vote.
No further action needs taken.
How about, do you wanna do it?
I'm listening, Jeff, keep talking, you're doing good.
Okay, now, number two. I'll tell you what, um. I'll write up what we talked about tonight, I'll go back, listen to the tape, to make sure everything's correct with what we've done and said. Bring to the next meeting. A reading for approval, move motion to accept what we have, all right? Let me go a little faster tonight, does that work for you?
You know, some of these are just-
Number two is to develop and utilize a citizen complaint program that documents. Now, the first item on here, I haven't got back yet, if I don't hear back from Alice, I'll ask her again. Uh, because the first thing on here says who was making the complaint. And if I followed township, which my memory's generally right on this stuff, the most current thing that we have in place happened, what, three or four years ago? At one point, we had a resolution that said you had to have your name on somebody to complain. Then when Eric Fox was asked about that, because of some questions from some residents, he recommended that we not do that. So, I believe the current situation is that the township cannot, does not require a person's name to be on a complaint. So, what we need to ask them again is if there's chances of staying on that, before we proceed.
I don't, I don't see a-
They want to know the date of the complaint's name, description of the complaint, which those things can be done by a name.
Everyone does that, too.
The name of the person resolving the issue, the case was resolved. A brief description of- A brief description of what was, what has been initiated or resolved the issue, or reasons why the issue cannot be resolved. Now, this is recommendation number two.
Honestly, I see another, just a non-issue there, because I'm gonna say nine hundred percent of the complaints that we get, it's a phone call, and you fix it within a day or two, and it, that's resolved. I mean, if it's something big, yeah, sure, we're gonna wait, but most of the time, it's, hey, I need to come back to Slaughter Road, hey, the road needs plowed, I have a tree limb down, that's, those are all, we don't need to do all this big work right now.
You can still do it with phone call. It, it's accountability, it's documenting of it to see if we followed through on it. So, what, do you wanna move a motion of what to put for recommendation number two?
No, I really don't.
What is, what do you want in the narrative to the risk management?
Never viewed, took no action. Twelve dash zero three, there's companies in here that are keeping over, I know it, the yellow swings.
Well, we, we talk in circles, but we have to do this. We have to finish, just not trying to-
I, I don't see any issue here with these two, that's my opinion.
Okay. Like I said, I'll have, what about you, Dave, wanna weigh in on that? No issue on that?
No. Somebody calls, they'll just go take care of it.
The purpose of having risk management insurance is reliability of the township's cover, to show that we can do diligence. That's the purpose of it. And also, it doesn't hurt to get our rates lower by showing that we do these things. Number three, it had to do with parks and recreation, I will briefly go over this, a lot of these things are consol, we've worked with the park committee.
I know that.
At regular intervals, perform inspections at the park, uh, in the meeting minutes, it indicates, I brought that to the park committee. I told them I'd be more than happy to, to work on a draft, have their help on it. It's better to have their input, too, and they said they would help me with that, so, in this narrative, the park committee is working towards an inspection coming. And we used to have ones, but it's, it's outdated at this point, anyway. And a lot of the old compliance things from the older management company were solved, because they had to do with all the equipment that's no longer here. So, those, those checklists, it just needs to be updated.
Who's gonna be responsible for doing the checklist?
Ultimately, the board of trustees, the, um, park committee is more than happy to assist me with it. Now, they've been informally doing it for quite a while, after meetings, so, go over and do a walk-in on that kind of thing. We need to do it, suggested that we do it, for risk management with an actual checklist. Again, it talks about the product, uh, the playgrounds should be in accordance with the safety standards outlined in the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. And that, uh, we already discussed that, I don't make the laws, but I think we should follow them. We're kind of a quandary here, what's gonna happen with that, if you insist on having a piece of equipment there, that we have, the money's already allocated through grant money to replace it. You know, you just kinda put that one in the cloud on there.
No, I'm, I'm not against getting a different person, Jeff, and we're not, we're not talking about it. I'm not against it. Of course, it's a fact.
I don't have any intention of discussing it. The other thing is the yellow swings. Now, there was a point here, we didn't get that far, but when it comes to disposal of these things, we're supposed to have commercial rights. Now, why you went and bought those new, I don't know, but you did. Now, I'm sure somebody would have a value with them, there's nothing wrong with them, other than they don't, they won't, they're not in compliance. My suggestion, uh, would include the merry-go-round, any other equipment that we get rid of when that's replaced. I spoke with the auctioneer that helps funder a lot of this by his rentals. He has a big auction January first, and he is more than happy for us to take anything like that from the township. Put it in the January auction, it would be worked just like any other sale. We don't have to pay to advertise it, we don't have to pay to take pictures or anything, we don't have to move this stuff, because it's right here. And that particular auction gets a lot of, a lot of publicity.
But you're paying thirty percent.
Now, other options would be with the merry-go-round, scrap it, now, we're, we're gonna get more out of an auction than that. And I, Barb and I both spoke, so she would've made the meeting, which, not going there in any of it.
I was there for part of it.
No, not that meeting, the risk meeting.
Oh, that was- Oh, that was happening there, you're right.
All right? Uh, my biggest concern on that, uh, before, we had equipment that was not in compliance. We had people that wanted to purchase a year auction, trustees for whatever reason gave it to another government entity.
Sure, did you know why we did that?
I don't care.
Well, let me tell you.
The reason that we're talking about it now...
We got a grant, free money to buy new equipment to update it, so why not give the old equipment to another township, okay, for their kids to enjoy it?
Okay, you can have the discussion later, I'm talking about another topic, okay, you're going off in the weeds.
Maybe that's what we should do.
That's where you're right, that's the merry-go-round.
You're going off in the weeds.
No, I'm not.
It's hard for me to keep my train of thought when you do that, all right?
Okay, the yellow swings, you know, we're just gonna hit these topics real quick, the yellow swings, I, I asked the, the park committee to get prices on the yellow swings, I haven't seen any kind of price sheet on the yell, on, on new swings, so on commercial grade swings, so, until we see price, prices on that, they said that they'd take care of that.
Well, you were at the meeting, they suggested that, that we, she's gonna review it, she's gonna look at the prices on it.
The bulk from seesaw, you said you took care of that, correct?
That's right.
Okay, then that's fine, that's in compliance, we don't have to worry about that. The, the swing carriage bolts on the swing, you know, the bolts on the swing.
Dan's reporting multiple times, she's gonna get it done, you build it, I don't know why you didn't.
Didn't say anything about getting it done. The, what's the carriage bolts and grade pipe bolts, what's the difference? It don't make sense to me.
Well, a lot of these things have to do with strangulation hazards and things like that, books over there, Dan, you can read it.
Okay, and then the only other thing that was on here was that park rule, you took care of that, correct? Decided for the park.
Were, uh, were you at the meeting during that portion of it?
Uh, not really, is there a park rule, do you guys discuss a little bit about it?
Okay, well, there are several things that they put here as suggestions, it's in their meeting minutes. Uh, one of the main things that, that, uh, in general on that sign, is that it said adult supervision required, and the word recommended is what they thought should be there, because their suggestion was required.
Has, has it been updated to these, to these specs, what they, what they recommend?
We heard the meaning, that's right.
So, so you hasn't had?
Yes.
Okay, very good, so we're done, thank you.
Well, those are all under number four.
Thank you.
Like I said, the next meeting, I'll have this ready, you have the issues, what I write on is based on the discussion. We'll change in the next meeting, we'll get this mailed in.
So you sent me a copy, be a copy of it, okay?
Yes, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it hand.
You can scan it, and email me a copy of it. Uh, at least two days before the meeting, so I can review it.
Okay, well, that's good, I'd like to have things two days before the meeting, too, like meeting minutes and things like that, but I don't get it.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, Jeff, if that's possible.
Should not be a problem.
Thank you very much.
We can also review the tape of what we discussed here, because that's all it's gonna have on it.
Good, um, on finished business, do you have anything else to add, or? Did the gardeners get fixed this month? They got fixed, I looked at it, did they get fixed up?
I did look at it, good.
I did, did you fix them?
I think you should rewind your tape on that, too, Dan said we'd get her done.
I'm asking, did, did you fix them?
It just needs two hangers.
Get her done, that's maintenance.
So, Dan's not the maintenance man? What's wrong with going, letting by two hangers, getting up there and fixing it, Jeff?
Okay.
What's wrong with you doing it?
I fixed it last time, get her done.
You fixed it last time, your hands took away to get up there and do it, I'm just asking.
You were unbelievably on it.
I'm just asking.
He's not the maintenance man either.
No, but he found it's...
Okay, then, why would you, why'd you make that statement?
He's not the boss either.
During the windstorm...
No, he's not.
During the aftermath of the windstorm, I worked with the neighbor and cleaned the whole thing up, it took us hours to clean that up. You didn't involve, you don't see me coming to here crying to you, because you weren't there helping.
Do you know how many hours it took us to clean the roads, the township roads, which the public drives on? We're not moving by the gutter with those couple days after, we're working by the roads.
I think you want arguments.
No, I'm just stating the facts.
I think we should try to get things done.
You better do nothing.
So you said that, that you thought maybe we should clean an insurance company, I don't, the, it's gonna cost five dollars to fix it, Jeff?
Really?
Really?
Two hangers. When I fixed it last time, it, very little stuff I needed, it was thirty-five, forty bucks, so...
Two, two hangers you can buy for five dollars, I guarantee it.
Get her done.
Go ahead, Jeff, I'll leave that on you, bud. That's all I have on our business, new business.
You're being ridiculous.
The county budget resolution, we have something on that, yeah?
Yes, can you pass the resolution, accepting the amounts and raise as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor? Do you want me to read that?
No, it's just, it's the standards, that's what we always...
Yeah, because we do it everywhere. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Can I make a motion to accept it, bud?
I'll second it.
When is that due?
Um, as soon as I get it in.
Is there a date on that, that it's due?
No, I've had it for a month, though, it needs to be turned in.
What do we need to take, our, our salt?
I need to take a vote. Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
What do you guys think about public liability?
Cargill.
When?
When? I don't know if there's a, well, we have to do it before, like next vote or something like that.
Do you have anything else, or do you have a... Jeff, gonna go and do that, or that?
Sure, good, I asked you about that in the beginning, uh, Public Works, round twenty-seven. Care to discuss that?
What are you asking?
I moved that we discuss applying for District Seventeen, Round Twenty-Seven, uh, State Capitol Improvement Grant.
When are you gonna apply for it?
Move the motion to second to discuss.
No, I'm just asking if, if we're gonna, or, if we're gonna apply for it.
That's what we have to discuss.
Just apply for it. Can you sign this?
Please let the record reflect that I moved motion to discuss applying for the Round Twenty-Seven State Capitol Improvement Grant. Note on that, the deadline to apply is ten-five, two thousand twelve, five P.M., if it's not discussed tonight, then...
Where are we gonna, where are they gonna, what are they gonna apply for?
Second the motion, discuss it.
I want to discuss something, where are we, second it?
Why not second it, he knows the good, good.
What did you say what it is? I did say what it is.
Yes, I will second the motion, so we can discuss it, okay, now let's discuss it, please.
Okay, Ben, uh, like I said already...
Wait, roll call vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, go on.
Again, the deadline in this is October fifth. Now, I had asked Jenny before, I haven't been here for two years for this process. So I had asked Jenny for copies of the last two years, which you guys should know all about, because you did it. Now, this is around twenty-six, and your pressure memory on it, it is called Dogwood Lakes Edition and Somerset Road. It's all Dogwood Lakes and a portion of Somerset. In order to proceed forward on this, as you already know, we would have to determine who the chief executive officer would be, that was Ben last year, so you should know all about it. Chief Financial Officer, we need that to be our fiscal officer, she has all the numbers. And then we have to assign a project manager, this should be done by motion, that was Donna Watkins last time.
So you're applying for the same thing, you're proposing that we apply for the same thing?
No, no, that's not my suggestion to do that.
Hold your motion.
We have to have officers, if we're gonna apply for a grant, we have to have officers. You've done this before.
Yes, I have.
Why can't we discuss what you're applying for, before you make the...
I'm not applying for it, the board has to apply for it.
What are you proposing that, that board applies for?
Okay, well, assuming we move forward, we did, we by vote have a chief executive officer, financial officer, and project manager.
We already know the financial officer, correct?
Pardon?
So, and we already know the financial officer, right?
Well, we need to do it by motion. Do you want to do it again?
Look, if we do that, if we're gonna do this, okay, and we'll vote on those if we're gonna do this, but what are you, make, what are you suggesting that we apply for, what road?
There are some other things that have to happen before the deadline, which should be tonight, unless you want to set a special meeting to discuss this. Uh, I've wanted to discuss things about roads and grants all year, if we have to sit here all night to finish it, I'm good with that, or you can set another meeting.
I think what everybody would like to know is...
The first thing that you have to do, you've been through it, what, ten times, Dan?
What's she said this, Dan?
Come on, Jeff, get to the point.
You have, do you want to be the financial officer, then I'll hand it to you, and you can just get to the point.
No, I want to know what you, what road you think you want to apply for.
Another thing we have to do is update our five-year plan. Now, I asked for information for the last, I didn't get that yet, so I don't have that information.
You didn't get what?
The five-year plan is in here.
Yes.
Okay, but to update the five-year plan, we have to make sure that's accurate with everything that has been done, we need to update the five-year plan.
So what information?
And in addition to that, we also have to get the project engineer certifications done. Now, I already did that, and I'll tell you what I did, and I did it for a reason, because the deadline's coming up. Now, I know what you've done the last several years, the last two years, we did exactly what we did four years ago, and you just submitted it again with a new update. I know that, because I read the last two years, and I know the years prior, because I was on the board working on this.
And we're not denying that fact, so move on.
Let me, okay?
Come on, Jeff.
What you've done for the last many years is apply for the same exact thing.
Right.
All right, now, assuming that that's what you'd want to do again, the engineer provided me with that, but if, it's, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting this, a different result. My opinion on it is that we should adjust it, because when we tried the very first time with this, we adjusted it, and we changed in kind of the maximum and some other things, but we never changed the roads themselves. So what I asked the engineer to do, because, you know, if you want to just do the same thing again, fine, it's here, all right, your, your, uh, executive officer has it here, you can take it and apply it. But what I asked, and I felt like when you look at the points on it, seemed a lot better to me, we asked for less. And my, my suggestion was to have him prepare these, so the board can make a decision, either to do it, just like before, basically say you did it, not get it, or if you want to take a look at these, I asked him to do them also separately, and they're certified by the engineer for the amounts, to just do either Somerset or just do Dogwood Lakes.
I don't think we have any more monies to up the in-kind amount.
We had already maximized it as high as we could go to get the maximum points.
Right.
And we did that several years ago.
Okay.
Okay, so something else has to change.
Right.
And my suggestion is to keep that at the maximum and go for a lesser amount, because one of the things that they do, when they get to the end of these grants, is they always look at how much money's left over, and they look for smaller projects to award it to. Now, if you, if you study, we had to do road counts, and some of the road counts I did are still accurate for these, we don't have to, from what Kurt told me, we don't have to do it every year, we don't have to do it this year. My personal suggestion is that for this grant, instead of having Dogwood Lakes Edition and Somerset, it's just to make it Dogwood Lakes, and the reason why...
Do Dogwood to...
What did you have on that, non-active road? You're gonna have a, a through road.
Well, they will do Dogwood, because it was part of it, it was on it before.
But it was with Somerset.
It was through road, it was on Somerset, it did Somerset and Dogwood same time.
He provided me with information to do that, so it can be submitted that way. Or, if you'd like, we can submit just Somerset Road, I think that would be more expensive easily, but at this point, yeah. I, I moved that Ben Hupp be the, uh, chief executive officer for the, uh, Public Works, did, Round Twenty-Seven, right?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that the fiscal officer Jenny Duvall be the chief financial officer.
Is there a second?
Yeah. I make motion, Jeff be the project manager.
Second.
Are we gonna finish that other vote first?
Go ahead, Jeff, take a roll call on this side of them.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
What is Dan, what, or?
Project management.
I made a motion that Jeff be project manager.
Second?
Yeah.
Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
You wanna look at these, then, we decided to start filling this paper out. We gotta take care of the five-year plan, and we've gotta decide what we're doing on that, and... Looks like you did this digitally before.
Yeah, it's like online, you can fill it out online, or download it and pull it out.
Yes, Jenny will have to fill out, she's got all the numbers.
Why does Jenny have to fill it out?
You're the financial person, we've got the numbers, I don't have...
You can fill out everything, and I'll give you the numbers that you need.
That's what I need to do at this point, just to make sure I have everything that's needed.
Tell me what you need, and I'll give it to you.
You have a copy of last year's?
What, what's, like, what's a cost share on this?
That's what?
The cost share, we have to do it.
Do you have the first...
Last year's, I have, I know that's...
You don't have this here, so get it out.
I think that's what we're supposed to do right now.
I'm saying, you didn't, like, calculate how much our share would be, add what percentage, so that we could talk about it and figure out which way we want to go?
Like this one, in Dogwood, we just did Dogwood Drive North toward Deer Trail, hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, fifty cents, what was our share of that day, so we have to pay more.
Here's your five-year plan from the two thousand eleven.
They don't tell us what we got, hey?
Here's, here's the whole thing from two thousand eleven, you wanna compare it to what you did last year?
I'm not gonna sit here and look through all these right now, sixty pages and stuff.
Do you want to set a meeting to go over this prior to the deadline, so it can get done?
You mean for Ben?
No.
Oh, if we have a special meeting, yeah, we'll have that, yeah.
What do you think, Dan? You just applied for what we've been applying for?
Yeah, just applied for what we've been applying for.
For Somerset and, and Dogwood?
Or we can just apply for Somerset.
Dogwood's not bad, it'd be nice to get it done, though.
I know, let's just apply for Somerset, and then Dogwood, we'll have to figure it out, we don't want to...
Where are they announced there in Somerset?
And Dogwood. Two, two forty-four.
Two forty-four?
Get to last one.
It's twenty thousand more than it was last time. That's what it was.
I, I know we probably can say we'll come up with something, because that would break the law.
Do you want to set up a meeting?
It's not worth, I'm asking, do you know this, do you know the maximum in kind we can get, is twenty thousand, or something like that?
What it was last time, I believe that's Dogwood.
So, based on that, that's what our share would be, it's twenty thousand dollars more, it's gonna be...
Do you know what our total budget is that we have available? See, we can't fill out the paperwork tonight, you don't have that information.
When's this have to be in by?
Total five, five o'clock.
We usually have seventy thousand dollars per year.
Total fifth.
To do it, to, for our roads, so if we do that, that's taken, that's gonna take half, well, more. Yeah, two thirds, so you'd have like twenty thousand dollars left.
Much done.
I don't know what you, what you guys...
That's what the maximum in kind of goes, love.
Yeah, but then you have those points.
That's the maximum points of what we have from the last years.
When does that have to be applied in here?
October fifth.
So we can have a meeting next week, if you want, I just have to advertise it.
If you do, then you can have all the financials here, we can do the five-year plan and still meet the deadline.
Seven AM, good for you?
Seven.
Some people like to go work, but, come on. I don't know, eight?
I don't care. Seven thirty would be better.
Seven thirty, five o'clock?
Seven thirty's fine. When?
One o'clock, make that work.
What do you wanna do? Jeff, what do you wanna do?
Just have to allow time to somebody to drive it downtown, it's gonna be timestamped, so it has to be completed before Friday the fifth. I'd say schedule it as early as possible, we'll get it advertised.
What, what, hold on. How long do I have to have, just once?
Just once. I can run it Sunday paper.
Sunday paper would be a start, yeah? So Monday?
Monday'd be fine.
Monday, yeah?
First?
Yep. Seven thirty? Yeah?
Yeah, one.
Seven thirty?
AM.
In the morning?
AM.
Yeah, we already.
Yeah.
I'll second it, that's enough.
I'm just looking at Jenny's copy, remember? Feel the new business, Dan? Jeff? Public comment?
You have a question.
I'll do that.
I'd like to know if Mr. Corpen has taken pictures of people who use the dumpster up here?
No ma'am, I haven't taken pictures of anybody using dumpsters.
Oh, well, you made the comment that you didn't take a picture of Ben dumping his trash, so I wanted to know if you were taking pictures of the residents who use it.
Answer's no.
We have three things. As I mentioned, Mark and Deanna, I went to the meeting last night, and when you go to that meeting, it's a very professionally ran meeting. It's nothing like these township meetings. The minutes and all information that's gonna be brought to the meeting was given to each individual, and there were twenty-one people on that board. Every person for every issue that was being addressed that night had a packet of information in front of them that they knew before they got there. They went through, I don't know, what did you say Mark, a dozen issues within less than an hour. And there was none of this squabbling, yelling back and forth, chatter going on. The minutes were given to the, to the people, it was approved, the minutes were not even read, and the meeting went along very quickly. Is there any way something like that could happen with our meetings so they get finished a little quicker and stuff is done more professionally?
Give me your guys' input, like, you know, we'll start with the meeting minutes. Do you guys wanna hear the meeting minutes from the-
I, I personally don't because I, they're online number one, and-
They, they're not online until months after the meeting.
Doesn't matter, but if you're, if you wanna know, you either come to the meeting or, or not.
Well, I just, I just wanna-
I mean, that's my, I mean, that's my opinion.
It's all rubber, it's all the board.
Exactly.
I mean, I'm gonna do what you guys want, if you guys wanna hear, we'll read it, if you don't, then we won't.
I don't, no.
I don't wanna read them anymore.
You're supposed, how about, how about get the copy or paper passed?
You know, I mean, we could have a coffee up here if you want to read it.
Yeah, just have a copy, and if people wanna read it themselves, then whatever. That way the three trustees would have them ahead of time. If there were any additions or corrections, you would know ahead of time. You could tell Jenny, and it could be done that night of the meeting, over and done within two minutes.
I've been watching that for years.
You have four packets together, and every member of the board has the same information at the same time, and that packet is put on the agenda and you go right down it. And then at the end there's somebody showing up with this and somebody showing up with that. It should all be in a fourth packet, and you should have it at least a week in advance of the meeting, so that you have time to review it.
That'd be something the fiscal officer would have to do, especially with the meeting in that portion.
So, you know, why don't we just try, that's just my suggestion, just next meeting, we'll just have a, a paper copy up here. If people wanna review them, if you're more than welcome to, you know, we just won't read them. That'll save time on the meeting, you know? Um, are people happy with that, are we not happy with that?
I would suggest if you do that, you mark it draft, because until the board approves it, it's not actually official minutes.
Yeah, but the board is the one that approves it, all, all the board members have to do is read the minutes. And when you come to the meeting, you say, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the previous meeting? And if not, you vote yes or no, and you're the official record.
I would agree if they're made available to the board prior to the meeting.
That's what we're saying, give it to them.
The reason, I, I want to remind everybody what happened. The last time I gave Jeff a copy of my draft minutes, he rewrote my minutes, word for word, because he didn't like it.
You know, I had corrections to make, that's the-
Well, they were, you have corrections for a minute, you read it before or at the meeting, not before.
That's the purpose of having the draft, so you can review it in advance. If you notice, I don't make a big deal about it, but I don't sign the meeting minutes, because I don't see them before.
We notice you don't sign much of anything.
And there are many times where there are issues that come up, like, a good example recently is the CMI. You guys couldn't remember that you signed a lot of certificates. It's not even in the meeting minutes.
Well, you don't have no-
You don't have the right to rewrite the minutes, once the minute's been wrote. Jesus, she's does the minutes, you don't have no right to rewrite it.
I absolutely have-
And you shouldn't rewrite it, cause it's your law.
Nobody's rewriting that shit.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you, you did, you did. You're, you're on, yeah.
Alright, alright, so we'll try that next week, so everybody's happy, everybody's happy with it. We'll have a cop out there.
Hey, you don't have the right to rewrite it, you don't do nothing.
Ask him about it.
My next issue, my next-
That's the purpose of the draft.
My next issue is with the fact that I listened to the videotape of the junk car meeting, and Mr. Corpeni made a comment that he does not believe the residents are interested in getting the junk cars out of the township, that no one has complained.
I- I didn't say no one complained.
I sent you an email telling you that I am fully supporting junk cars being removed, and I know that Howard Collins has talked to, and he has come to this meeting before, that he is very adamant about having the junk cars removed. So when you made that comment, and I listened to it twice Jeff, that was absolutely wrong.
I would say the same thing again, never changed my, your email said I was a flip-flopper, absolutely not true. I've always taken the same stance with, with junk cars.
When you made it a year ago, you were the one who stood, sat right there and said, ORC allows for removal of junk cars, it doesn't need to be in our zoning, and you were gung ho on having junk cars removed.
That depiction of being gung ho's not accurate at all. I've never changed my stance on it. We do have junk car hearings, suggest that they come there, I already, uh, under correspondence, I mentioned Mr. Collins had contacted me, just contacted me. I also had the prosecutor come in, because we keep hearing, occasionally it's thrown out there by the zoning inspector or trustee, that, that the prosecutor, the prosecutor, it's clearly stated, there is no working open file other than what was discussed at the last meeting. So if Mr. Collins has an issue, and unless there's another file, I don't know. During the two years, it might have been a file open and closed, I don't know.
Mr. Collins contacted you about junk vehicles, correct?
His concerns are farm implements and vehicles for sale on his property. The two things that are, that he, he wants to know status on it. And there is no status on it if you don't have a file on it, but every now and then, you're saying there is one.
So-
Now, I know there's past files years ago, but I think they've all been closed.
Did, did-
Board of Interfairs, Dan, it's called June of last.
You got it right.
That's what we talked about, is Wes's file.
Did, with the, with that planner, concern or whatever it was, did you coordinate with Barb?
I brought it to the meeting tonight, were you listening?
I was listening.
I need to get a copy of it, so I probably never will.
Did Mr. Collins call you?
I've not heard from a Mr. Collins. But evidently he called Jeff, but Jeff didn't call me to relay it to me.
Called me to, I brought it to the board.
Right, he didn't need to, because zoning inspector works all the time. When it calls done, they start on, he only do it once a month. Okay, so you called to relay it.
Did you help him?
And then my other, my other question was, um, why did we pay fifteen thousand dollars to the local township trustees?
It's for fire contract.
Okay, I just wondered, that's all.
Danny had a check for last month, but she spilled her coffee on the check, so she had to avoid it, and get her another check.
Just wanted to know.
They couldn't dump her another two more checks. Any other public comment?
I have a question about the sign out here on the park.
Okay.
Nobody uses that sign anymore.
Okay. The advertising sign?
Yes, it hasn't been used, I don't think since the Easter egg hunt. And if it isn't gonna be used, then it should be removed. It's an eyesore, and it should be a hazard. Kids could climb on it, fall off of it, get hurt, it needs to be removed if it isn't gonna be repaired and used.
I stopped in at the pork committee meeting, I, I got here a catwalk here, and, um, I brought that up about that, and they said that they would look into or maybe plan to purchase another one. Um, they weren't sure when, or how, or what noise it might have probably. Uh, but you're, I mean, you're suggesting that we just, we're not gonna use that to, to remove that, right?
Yes, if it's not gonna be used or repaired, so it can't be-
I know it's, I know it's broken, on one, at least on one side it's broken, so-
Just put in the filler.
Yeah, we can do that, definitely.
What are you gonna do about the flagpole that's right here, you gonna lay that there? I mean, we got branded flagpoles, they're pretty, um, though we had one, but are you gonna do something with that one there?
What do you recommend?
I don't know, I just wanna know, maybe throw a flag on it?
It's not lighter, it's not lighter, so we'd have to light it.
Maybe remove it. Use that money in the parking, you have to remove it, that's a removal thing, isn't it?
Not far apart, but-
I know, I'm being a, a teacher.
Do you guys wanna take any action on that?
Yeah, put a Ohio flag on it.
Would that have to be lighter? It's outside of what, that night, wouldn't it? An Ohio flag would have to?
Is that in writing somewhere?
I, I don't, that's what I'm asking.
Maybe you should, there, there is a flag, that is, that is, yeah. For Ohio, you got that lit up too?
Do you guys wanna discuss it, about taking the sign and the flagpole out? What do you think? If, if we're not gonna sign, we could stick it in by the case tractor. I know we're not moving through it.
That sign can be moved, everyone-
We'll put it up, it's not like a- Any other public comment?
Uh, last one, we talked about phone bills and public, you know, public record and whatnot. I was just kinda curious as to why the township couldn't actually buy a track phone, cause I used to have one, and with double the minutes, you could probably get nine hundred minutes for probably less than a hundred bucks on a track phone. That's less than what we're paying now, but I think we're paying what, twenty-five bucks a month? Which is three hundred, three hundred bucks a year.
Paying twenty-five bucks a month for a little bit.
Does, that gets into the part of how many minutes are we actually having to use? Would we use more than nine hundred minutes? I would, I would think not, and if you, if you did-
You ever love your phone bill?
I'm talking about just for public. This is, this is not private, this is supposed to be just township, is it? Do you think that's gonna happen? I don't know. Even if it does, you could buy another nine hundred minutes for no, less than a hundred dollars. So what I'm saying is it could be a savings, I'm just throwing it out there. You could save probably a hundred to two hundred dollars a year by going to a track phone, and it would all be public. It wouldn't be on private, involved in this, this is all public.
But wait, the trouble with the track phone, you don't have a bill.
Well, you can't, the, the new ones now, you can, you can have the records, but anyway. It's just a thought, just a thought, so it's all public. So it's not private.
Okay.
And try to save money. Uh, new employees, we had a bunch of people months ago had put in applications, only have, I guess, two employees now, actually, right?
We had seven applications before too.
So, what's the, why would we not now go to that list and go to those other people and try to get a few more people on before some? I mean, you know, people do have accidents, maybe have sickness, or maybe die, or whatever, would it not be a good idea to add maybe a few more people, uh, on the board now? You know, kinda get them trained and whatnot, and maybe they're on, they're at will. So we had applicants that have put in, why would we not?
We still have them, I mean, we saw the application.
So we're not, we're not gonna act on it, I'm just throwing it out there. Okay?
We, we don't have any work.
Uh, next, next thing was, the, the whole hypocrisy about-
I was gonna, he comes here, runs his mouth to beating, he don't even live in the town fifth.
He's got funds, he's got problem here.
Do I, do I? You know, I mean, is that taken away from my time, you know?
I wasn't taking, go ahead.
Hypocrisy about the, you know, zoning rules violations and stuff, it seems kinda odd to me to, uh, somebody gets dinged for having a trailer that they're eventually gonna move on, onto their property and use. Uh, they get a violation, but yet I found out that our board president at the time had put in an application, which I did get a public record of, for a pole barn. Yet I look on, that's another thing, Mac, uh, Google Earth, you can go backwards in time. I'm sure some people know that, and you can find out that. I think our board president, Mr. Dan here, put in that application for a pole barn, yet he tore down his trailer, and now he's living in that pole barn. So that wasn't just a simple pole barn, that was a residential structure, the way it looks to me. I don't think that was ever really discussed, or there was anything formally done about that. But yet you have a guy that's getting-
There's no violation that occurred.
There's, there's getting a violation now-
A violation occurred.
For having a trailer sitting there, he mentioned he wants to move on, he's not living in it. Now, here in this case, there was a transition made from a trailer, which is now gone, and you can see on Google Earth when it moved, and is now living in, in a pole barn that was supposed to be just a pole barn structure, not a residential.
Ma'am?
Go ahead, butterfly to the right.
That pole barn was submitted as a pole barn, it was a pole barn, then it was requested for change of use, that was converted to a home, then the other trailer was removed. So he was in full violation, full, full accordance with the zoning, there is no violation.
So that never came to a board meeting, or any, that was, that was never a discussion from a zoning, I thought you usually brought that to the, to the board, that, oh, this is what happened?
The change of use deals with Lincoln County, not us.
So why would this guy get a violation then?
Because he has two structures, two primary structures on his lot. Hey, that's your zoning, you don't like it, change it.
He did the same damn thing.
Change it.
He doesn't have the primary structures.
Yes, he does, there's two trailers sitting there, that's two primary structures.
Oh, come on.
We'll find out more on up-
That's ridiculous.
Now, now, our township's history on that, we've had two or three people that, uh, the only thing that maybe he should have done, and he actually should have done, is contact, and he could have assisted in, a little customer service.
No, no customer service, that's not from you.
Oh, heaven forbid.
It's not been customer service because of you.
We have a zoning appeals board. If, if you talked to him, you denied him, which apparently you talked to Adam or something, and denied him to do it, you should have provided him with a zoning appeal application. And he could have applied like other people have in the past, when they were building a home. It happened on Boundaries Road, it happened on Oakwood Road. He was the appeals board, and they ruled, and they ruled in their favor that it was okay for them to do that, and then they were going to get rid of the other home or structure within a certain amount of time. Now, why you didn't do that, I don't, don't know, it would've saved a lot of trouble, other than just sending a fire.
Well, if I had the capability to record every phone call I had, I could bring everything I did for you. So you can see that I talked about it, and let the individual know, you can go to the appeals board.
And you talked to him, I never did-
I'm doing my job.
I'm talking here.
I'm not supposed to be like that.
I'm talking to you.
Cause I'm hearing him and you, and-
Yeah, well, you can hear things, you can hear everything.
So you talked to Mr. Livingston, to Gerald, so why didn't you give him some guidance, and say, hey, this is-
What do you mean, ma'am?
When what?
I was called by him after he got this notice. And it said, that what, it said, it said he had to remove it by, you gave him the date of the thirteenth or something? Where, where are we on, where are we on this?
Uh, did I, did I just say that after we just heard I had an appointment?
Yeah.
To go further with this action, that's what I thought I said.
So anyway, what reason I brought that up, it seems to have like hypocrisy to get a violation for that, because I'd be willing to bet, if I asked for public record of how this other deal went down with Dan, I'm gonna find some holes in that baby. About when it went down, when it went down, when the subject system was put in, all that other stuff, I'd be willing to bet you there'd be some holes in that. All I'm saying is a little hypocritical of, of vi, of sit, getting zoning violations, when, I'll give you another example, Coupurider, really. I know there was a trailer that was taken off, a house was built, it was, and the trailer was moved for years. It was still on that property, so it's the same darn thing.
Hold on, wait, did you make a complaint on it?
At the time, nobody was pushing this.
Did you make a complaint on it?
No.
Obviously, I didn't say it.
My point, my point is, no, I didn't, and at that time, there was none of this push that there is now with the junk cars and all that, there's junk cars sitting all over the place, there was no push, that's just recent. This incident just happened recently, so now I'm saying, why are we being hypocritical, and now, you know, saying something-
What incident, it's being pushed now, it's being pushed.
Yeah, obviously, obviously it's being pushed, but only on certain deals.
Starting the process.
Possibly, I'm just saying it's hypocritical.
The assender on wheels is on the ground, on wheels, or is it locked down on the ground?
No, no, it's just sitting there.
It's on wheels.
Just sitting there. Just sitting there.
And it's a mobile unit, we can't do anything about it.
Uh, court, prosecuting attorney, it's all potential.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna know what she's doing and start the process on her.
That's smart.
I don't mind her.
It just.
I got a question. Does this township want zoning? Because they're acting like I am some kind of an evil vindictive individual, I am going by your book, if you don't like the book, change the book, if you don't want zoning, get it out, I was hired to do a job, if you people knew me when I got hired, I don't screw around, I do what I'm told to do, I go by the book.
I agree with you.
If you don't like it, get it out!
I agree with you, if people don't want it, let's change it, vote it out, same thing with the junk.
We're not talking about zoning again, we're talking about one issue where a guy has a, has a trailer on wheels, sitting there, that he wants to eventually move over.
That's being an issue.
I mean, it's like, come on, that's just.
Why didn't the, the guy over here talk about it instead of you?
So I'm assuming.
Cause a lot of people would rather not attend this ridiculous thing.
It's not a violation also, that camper's on wheels, but he's living in that camper with another resident on that same acreage.
We're gonna move on to that, cause you're gonna take a prosecutor on the third, correct?
You hired me to do the job, that's what I'm doing.
Yes, you're gonna take a prosecutor on that, if people don't want zoning, or they wanna change, or they don't want the junk.
Then they need to get it out!
Get together and change it, you know what I mean?
The people who change it, that's it.
You can't have a comprehensive plan if you have no zoning.
They're right.
Well, if it's noted out, then the state can send a charge for what they do.
It doesn't matter, it's a no win situation, and we're not gonna be as evil as they are.
I'm not commercializing.
One second.
Yeah, we don't want to be behind you.
I'd just like to congratulate Ben on his flea deal and everything, and hope you get the max, my pleasure.
We're gonna, we gotta act like a thug, and, I can get treated like a thug.
There's reasons behind everything, you only read one side of the story, you didn't read the other side.
Okay, well, you know what, right? Now, I'm.
You don't know, you were there, you were not there, you don't know.
It's a police report.
He said, she said, two people were there, two people.
Barb, I, I was at the truck.
Where's that other guy, let's see it, the child has nothing to do with it, two people were there.
But man, he agreed to the facts!
Two people.
He agreed to the facts!
Yeah, I'm betting he agreed, he's sticking a gun to someone's face, arms or chest, I bet.
In your wife, you just.
Bullshit.
You know, I tell her, hit the road.
So.
I tell her, hit the road, slut.
So you're telling me none of that stuff happened on the other side of the equation, you don't, huh?
That, that's fine, Jack, that's what you wanna be, but you know, are these meetings safe, just like I said here, you know, you see, you hear all the shootings, everything else, you know, and we've got our president sitting right there, and, and we all know what he did.
You got an asshole set, that is.
Well, you know. He ain't gonna pull the gun on anybody, he frightened them, who pulled a gun on anybody? Who pulled a gun on anybody?
I'm just saying we're not part of this board.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Hough.
I'll take the call.
You know, Jack, you gotta admit, this meeting hasn't been run right since I've been coming down here.
Ben is not the reason these meetings don't run right. Well, he's the reason the meetings don't run right, he's setting it together in a table.
The other meetings don't run right, you know, there's three other people in charge.
That's what.
You think what you want, Jack, you gotta have the people in charge run the meeting, you don't have people back here running.
I don't have a problem with that.
Don't mouth me, bud, you got no right to sit there and mouth people, people in the front yard, that's your problem.
I don't care!
Hey, come on, we're not having that in here, we're not having any of that in here, nobody, none of us.
Then you guys need to take control of the meetings, you three, right there, these guys back here, I can't even hear you guys discussing stuff, because these guys are all running mouth about somebody else, that's your problem, right there, I ain't been tending down here but, but a year, so I'll tell you what, this shit you read in the beacon, it's a lot of the truth!
Let me ask you a question, what do, what would you recommend of it?
I don't know what you gotta do, but you guys have got to take control of the people back here.
I'm not here for some sideshow, I'm here to conduct business with the board of trustees.
Okay, then that's what you gotta do, because we can't hear what you guys are discussing about the issue.
That's what these two gentlemen in our fist walk, that's what I'm here to conduct business with, hey, I'm not here for, for any sideshow out here with y'all, you guys are more than welcome to come, you know, and view, and if you have questions, that's great, that's.
Ben, you are, you are ready with Jeff, just he went back there, why?
Cause everybody has their opinion, right?
And I've got my opinion, and I'll keep my opinion, Jack.
Everybody has their opinion, we're here to discuss it, I agree with you, that there's too much.
And you, you got, too much, if somebody makes a comment, I ain't saying it is a good back and donny, because he got mad at me, the ditch in front of my house has never been cleaned out, because he got mad at me.
That's fine.
See, that ain't right, my ass, both of you guys, you got to comment about it, neither one has said anything about it.
Me either.
Both of you, you and Dan, you're both, and both of you just sit there, cause once he got mad at me, he never come out and finished that ditch, and it's been that way since July last year, and it's still, is a problem, and I've kept quiet about it all this time, it's your guys' job, responsibility, regardless who did it.
Well, I'll be honest with you, if somebody calls me and says, hey, my ditch is plugged up, okay?
I personally talked the donny on, when he was in charge.
I'm gonna go and take a look at it, and if it's plugged up, either, I'm gonna go and go see what guy got there and fix it, that's, that's our truth.
No, he told me he had no reason to after, do it, cause somebody else should've done it, cause it's their fault, he tried to blame my neighbor, it wasn't neighbor. I mean, let's go back, why?
The ditch is a plug, it's just, it's just a pile of dirt and stuff that.
They did that, they filed all right along the side of the road, what they did, so it's all.
So he can't even, I mean, he can't.
I used to mow her up alongside my pride.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I really don't, what's the address?
Yeah, cause he can't, he can't even mow up alongside the road, keep the grass there because of these piles of dirt that.
But you know, when you get a township trustee to sit there and tell you that, to tell you you're stupid and stuff, that ain't right.
I'm here to work for you guys, right? Is that right? If you guys have a problem, why don't you guys address it? We want to.
But, when you got one guy, and then he says something, while else says anything, goes along with him, I think this guy think, well, are they his yes man, or what? Now, usually I'm a pretty quiet guy, but.
What's your advice on this, do you, I don't know, do you wanna give to me?
Eight five six nine, Somerset Road. But it's right along, it's like, say our driveway, we're on the, the.
We're going down.
Wrong, wrong left, wrong south.
Yeah, and it's.
No, my driveway don't work out, right?
Is it, just keep, how, just tell me that, it's on the left?
Yeah, it's on the left, and it's like, you're going down towards, it's, it's at, like, our driveway's here, forty's up this way, it's on the far side of the driveway, is where he left the mess.
Before the interstate, correct? Or after the interstate?
Before the interstate, long before the interstate.
Okay, well, I was about to take a look at it.
But it, it, you know, it just needs created off right there, so that.
Between the road and the ditch.
You might want to look in the ditch, it's, some, see, they didn't clean it out pretty bad.
Okay.
But.
But what it does.
But that, that, that's the problem I see here, nobody can take, can take control.
But, you know, maybe I do some wrong things, I don't know, I'm not perfect, you know, when we talk about subject, I like to get input on it, you know, cause I, I don't wanna make every decision, you know, and, and be the only one to make that decision, I want you guys to know all that.
Well, we want you guys to work together, I mean, you guys, we're together to get anything.
I just have hard time when stuff is, is brought, just to the meeting, I don't see it, you know, or it's, it's aiming to vote on this, or this.
I think the idea of having the thing up here minutes ahead, and you guys have it way ahead of me.
Like a packet.
That is a real good, that is a good idea.
Yeah.
That way you don't, you can read it, it's, you know, unless somebody has a correction.
That's probably right, just about every board I've ever served, I've.
You gotta, you gotta take control of people back here, to keep their comments down till whatever, and if I step on somebody's toes, I'm sorry, if that's what I feel.
Yeah, but you're saying that he brought that regulation when they're talking about it too.
Well, that's very weird, but that's, that's their thing, well.
That's not the way.
We had, we've been, I talked before on that issue, if you've got something to say about what they're talking about, raise your hand.
Well, that, that's when they're discussing something, and they should say, does anyone have a concern about this now?
And I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna forgive, I'm not gonna.
And when we raise our hand, and, and that, more people besides Jeff has to be facing up, so they'll see our hand.
Well, the table was set that way before, they decided to move it.
I'll tell you why we sit this way, when I, when I speak to the board of trustees, okay, and I've been to several, lots, lots of different township meetings, and I've seen how they conduct business, and it's not like this, they sit like this, okay, cause we're here for a board meeting, I wanna look at another man or woman in their face when I talk to them, you know, I don't wanna look at the side of their head when I'm asking them a question, because they won't look at me, okay, so that's why the table's set like this, I wanted the seating to be two on this side, two on that side, that's why I put it like this, one person can't get along with that, because I don't know if they can, see everybody, can't get in the camera, I'm not here to look at everybody in the face, because I'm here to look at these people, okay, that's why the table's set like this, and that's how it should be, we should go look at each other, look at each other in the face.
Now, you're saying all these other people do that because township commissioners, I've been up there several times, I've been to several other townships, they all sit right there.
Really? The Licking Township.
Licking Township, they do the same thing, I've been down there.
Really? Go to the next meeting.
They move, did they move? Cause usually they were right there, right in front, and people were sitting behind.
Two, two, ten and ten.
What you're doing, you're doing that, you're actually putting me back to the public, and I refuse to put my back to the public, that's why I'm.
I'm not here to discuss business with public, I'm here to discuss business with Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Popeye, and Mrs. Ball, that's who discusses business.
I'm, I'm here to make sure that everything is accessible to the public, and an open meeting for all to observe and see, and I'm not putting my back to anybody.
We're not hiding anything, I don't have anything to hide, you know, we're, we're not trying to get around anything here.
I wanna. Are you putting my back to anybody either?
I wanna look at a man in the face when I talk to him, not look at the side of his head.
But you're saying Licking Township has moved.
Hundred percent.
When did they do that?
I don't know.
Cause I've been down there, it wasn't even, not in the last year, but they should be right there.
I've had several people comment about it as well, they don't understand it.
Where were they, where were they sitting when you went down?
Face to face, I mean.
Right there in a row, right?
I'm, probably, I was down there, maybe, it was the summer, so, four months, five months ago, six months?
I've been there four or six.
This is always a township, they've.
I know Dane's been down there.
Be back outgotten from people that complain about it, cause it should be the way.
The only mysterious thing that I see there is Jeff, is you get all this feedback from people on all these different subjects, do you know how much feedback I get on it?
No. You didn't, now?
You get all these phone calls, I haven't heard any.
You don't even listen to me, you came here and jerked the table around, so I just adjusted and came over here, I'm not gonna put my back to the public, you can do it if you like, I'm not going to.
Sit right there, with the chair, with the chair.
Doesn't work.
Okay.
You want input, but then you just do it completely your way, so it's kinda.
No, no, honestly, on the board presence, I should be able to tell people where to sit.
It's not dictatorial sit, it is a board.
No, I should be able to say, I just.
You don't have, you don't have great power as your president, you're, you're.
Well, it was never discussed in the board, really, it was just done.
You're supposed to be running the meeting, you're responsible.
Maybe if the general organizational meeting, we'll sign seats, how's that sound?
That was, it was, it was a dictatorship, cause it was just done.
Sure it was.
I mean, it was just done.
Like I said, maybe if the general meeting, we'll sign seats.
That, that's the difference, and that's the difference between working together.
I'm sure they don't go along whatever you want anyway, let's do it right.
Are you signing any of those checks?
Sounds to me like we're still on public comment, I don't know.
No, we're not.
Then we put it in, pay bills, and then everybody start talking again.
So you, are we done with the public comments?
We're on public comment, we can have a discussion.
We're just talking.
Thanks, guys, I'll be out, okay, do you want to be there with me?
Well, I'll be there, about three.
Okay.
Let's stay.
Okay, I don't, I don't know.
Tomorrow, Friday.
Possibly, or after, so.
They are.
We're getting our homes by three o'clock.
Your right, the driveway does wash out, so I'll usually take my tractor and push it back.
Right down the road, ice right there, winter time, I'll go out.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, last winter.
And we can go for a cut and ditch it up on the side, that's all.
On Somerset? Yeah. We'll stop looking, we'll go down, see if there's, if there's more finger, so, got the equipment.
I'm going all that dirt out there, it's sloped, it's level now, it's a work.
Well, it's not level, so I can't know.
You don't want it anyways, do you?
I did try to drive it, you guys ain't do it that often, so, so why?
Come on now, come on now, we'll be out soon.
Okay.
It's the summer, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, you're right, it's been dry.
First check we have is four oh six six, two hundred ninety-eight dollars, five cents, Miles, Miles Preson Inspector, from here to repair reimbursement phone bill. Check four oh six eight, four hundred forty dollars, sixty-four cents, Donald W. Watkins. Four oh seven zero, small asphalt pavement, sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars, the note says bounce due after this check, fourteen thousand, two ninety-nine, twenty-four.
Nah, well, I can do this.
Hamilton Parker, eight by eight bricks, quantity two hundred forty dollars, check four oh five five.
Is that what you're saying, Mark? See it any time.
Check four oh six one, six twenty-three oh eight, and I note here that the other trustees did not sign this check, it's the address Jeffrey Day Court Bank, check four oh six one. M N C O, fifty-seven dollars, eighty cents for advertising, four oh five six. Four oh five seven, one hundred ninety-three dollars, twenty-eight cents, limestone. Four oh six two, nine dollars, powers from shale company. Hundred dollars. Check four oh six three, gossip line, supplies and rental, one hundred seventy dollars, or one hundred seventy dollars, seven cents. I don't know what that's for. Four oh six four, Hopeful Township Trustees, buyer contract payment, fifteen thousand, one hundred seven dollars, twelve cents. Line check four oh six four. Still running, huh? Well, still running?
Yeah, yours is.
Four oh six five, three hundred ninety-nine dollars, water estate for U A N fees. Cause our tape here stopped a long while ago.
No, it's, it's on.
I mean, this, this audio piece has been done. Four oh seven one, five thousand dollars, Bentley fire equipment. Fire equipment purchased over rent. Four oh five four, private public entity consortium, two hundred fifty-eight dollars, thirty cents. Old tech administration fee. Four oh six seven, Barbara L. Selack. For five hundred eighty dollars, seventy-nine cents.
I still got, I'm still got.
Four oh six nine, Jack Richard Hedges for three hundred sixty-six dollars, eighty-four cents.
Yeah, cross over, yeah. Yep, get him around the curve.
Also, I note on the record, uh, no check came around for Dana Nelson Van Burne, showing the back of the name minutes. No check came around for Benjamin C. Hopson in the minutes. And no check for Jenny Devall came around in the minutes. And again, my check is unsigned by the other electorities. I'm going to try. And I'll note that the other trustees have left the table. Leave it on. You haven't had a second yet.
I'll second you, Jared.
Call in favor?
Yeah.
Is there a reason you didn't sign this check? And is there a reason you didn't sign it was around?
Probably a miss to this one?
Yeah, sure did. Is that still running, though?
We have, uh, Mr. Will, Jack Hedges.
Is that still running?
Is missing a signature from Mr. Corpenney.
Will, is that still running?
Yeah. And Mrs. Lee that is missing a signature from Jeff Corpenney.
I'll find it next week, the second Tuesday.
A small asphalt paving, they're missing a signature from Jeff Corpenney. A small asphalt paving, they're missing a signature from Jeff Corpenney. A Mr. Donald Watkins that is missing a signature from Jeff Corpenney. And then another check from Mrs. Lee that is also missing a signature from Mr. Corpenney.
So are you gonna sign this check or not, Jack?
Go ahead. Do you do?
I didn't make a motion.
Do you do, sign the rest of the checks?
Are you gonna sign this check or not?
Are you gonna sign these checks?
Did you make a motion?
Yep.
My second.
Ben already seconded it.
It works.
Oh.
We already got it.
Yes. Okay.
You gonna go home now? I ain't doing one forever. Well, sorta, if, you know, if I think about it, we had to drop right after that. Shit. I got wounds, well, I got wounds, but I won't take it though. I ain't gonna press with it though. I'm walking out here. Oh, hell, Larry Donovan, he called me up. He said, bang, you all shit, man. Everyone threw a TV. They got your own yard tore up. Don't see it. I said, yeah, I said, yeah.
Was there a reason you were signing this check, Jack?
Same reason that the trustees aren't signing it.
What's that reason?
Because you're not signing out of people's checks.
That's what.
What does this check have to do with their checks?
You're not doing your job.
I told the state, I said, you know what? You need to get in that little.
He don't need that money. He's got many, many junk in his bus.
Hell, yeah. It, it could have put this damn shit down the damn pretto, but no, they burned it. Hell, no. I seen the ditch. I can see a concrete down there.
One person else would be made about three centuries.
Oh, yeah?
Isn't that correct, Jack?
This time.
Yeah.
What happens if one of them? I don't know. I'm gonna have to figure it out.
Have you read their vice coach?
Have you?
The trustees. Do you license it for the center?
About how the employees get paid?
Yeah.
They do a job for the township, so they need to get paid.
I said, yes.
You hire people, okay?
If you, uh.
I said, that was all.
Or ask for a time sheets and you forget. I'm really not, I'm not your rubber stick.
I said, asshole.
You don't give me information. Not on that.
They all know.
I haven't already told you about that. I get them on Sunday. How am I gonna get your copy?
Tell me, if you have a copy machine. Why don't you bring that copy machine down here, right?
Yeah. Why would I bring the copy machine down here? Make two copies a month?
Perfect.
Whatever you need to do to get that information acquired or whatever. That's the whole point. I need to see it. I gotta see it. How do I know? You just wanna rubber stick your signature.
Anyway, but that leaves a lot on the roof like that. Come down to you.
I told you it's ever done. I told you it's right here. He looked funny. Not over there, right? Excuse me.
Yeah.
And Ben.
But I found that out. I mean, there was something else.
It's ready.
Oh, we have, I said.
You gonna lock up?
That hot water tank, that or these things.
Oh, and the building over here?
Well, I don't know. We got lit and stuck one out again.
Gas? I'll look, okay.
I mean, I don't know. Water's a line, put a pipe, put a lot. And there's not enough water going in that commode down there.
Okay.
All of our street and that water tank goes to commode. They got a big bunch coming in here that way.
When's that gonna be? So the hot water tank's just not working at all?
Huh?
The hot water tank, it just stays lit?
We live, there's one out again.
Okay.
So there's something wrong in there, of course, not staying lit.
Right, right.
I don't know whether that's electric, anything to do with it or not. I don't know much of nothing.
Well, I'll look at it and say, is it newer one or older one?
Huh?
Is it newer or older, you know? What's it look like?
It's not a new one, although.
Okay, I'll look at it.
Well, I mean, it's got a pile like way up in it.
Right, right.
And the water, that commode, gotta go clean up around. And put about three quarters line in there. They had trouble over there. Well. Sunday. And said it jumped the rust and stuff.
What kind of co, is it, is it steel lines? Are they steel water lines?
No, it's plastic.
Plastic?
They don't make any difference which ones. Just damn much rust coming out of that well.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah. I didn't know if maybe it was a steel line in there somewhere and it was just, you know, pulled out.
No, they got, have water going up this way, clean over here.
Right.
And back, and you put it straight across.
Straight across, right. I'll take a look at it definitely. We'll see what we can figure out.
They can put a drop line in it and go across.
Right, right. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.